It's the eighth time and they have been in existence for nine years.
Uh, thank you. Well, it was around when I was there and then it kinda went away for a while.
Brought it back. Brought it back.
Um, Councilmember Ingram has an announcement.
Yeah, no, just wanted to remind the community that Fayetteville Beautiful is this weekend. Um, we love for everyone now organizing their communities to do cleanup. Um, we, we hosted a, a multitude of families, children this weekend. Uh, because of Dogwood baseball games, Fourth Friday. Um, I'd like to see that continue and also, um, so we saw today. Ripley, Hutton Park and groundbreaking, breaking, thank you for everyone who came today. Uh, Mark, today we're all splash pads, uh, we're turned on and, uh, we hope you take pleasure. Cool offs during this spring summertime if the weather cooperates.
Thank you, Councilmember Ingram. Uh, those of you wondering where the mayor is, he is in, uh, Washington at an airlines conference. And, uh, his plan is to meet with Spirit Frontier and Avalo. Uh, Avalo has four flights every day from Wilmington to D C A. And, uh, since we've not gotten anywhere with American and Delta, we wanna try to see if we can get interest from another airline. So he drove up there this morning and called me this morning and I said, Mr. Mayor, we got a meeting tonight. He said, I know, you're running it. I went, oh, alright, well, thank you, thank you. Alright, it gives me, uh, yes ma'am, Councilmember Banks McLaughlin.
I just wanted to add to, um, today, May first, uh, is the first day that we opened up the micro rent as far as applications. So I just wanted to put that out there for the community.
Thank you, thank you, yes ma'am.
Well, Mayor Pro, tell me, let me say something.
Make sure Councilmember Thompson's in on.
I'm surprised nobody commented on our Dogwood Festival this weekend or what a great time it was for that Friday and Saturday. I know it was kinda, uh, weather bad with the, uh, weather, so I don't know how the closing act went. I think it was a great turnout, a lot of people came out, so.
City manager to put you on the spot, um, can you kinda give us a update on how the Dogwood Festival went?
Um, I don't have any numbers, but, um, uh, police chief is here. We didn't have any, um, calls, significant calls for service, which was good. We had some issues out in the grander community, but nothing really associated with downtown. Um, I don't know if we had numbers.
Uh, probably won't have those until maybe a week from now, uh, from Ms. Sarah Grace. However, I will say that, um, people, people love the water station. Uh, I think that's great that, uh, they're able to offer that. Uh, of course, Dogwood did shut down, uh, for a few hours on Sunday due to the hailstorm that hit Fayetteville. Um, based off of what, uh, messages and calls that I got, the closing act was a phenomenal job. Of course, uh, people still do say they want more options for the week, throughout the weekend and, uh, more diverse. But, um, I think that's set more so for Sarah Grace to handle with her, her board. Um, but overall, um, the Fourth Friday was a, was a success, especially with, um, uh, National Poet being here on Friday. And also baseball games, um, both days were heavily attended, uh, with, what's your name?
Five thousand on Saturday.
Yeah, heavily attended, um, and so we, we had a great weekend in Fayetteville and for the downtown footprint. And so thanks to all of our departments that supported, I know Economic Committee was out there. Um, I know, uh, our fire department was out there, police department was out, had tables, getting information. And, um, Fayetteville next was out as well, and I saw a good amount of individuals going to that table. Um, so we overall pretty much had a great weekend and showed up for Fayetteville, thank you.
Councilmember. Now it gives me great pleasure to, uh, read a proclamation from the mayor for the Professional Municipal Clerks Week. In honor of our clerk. Whereas the office of the Professional Municipal Clerk, a time honored and vital, vital part of local government exists throughout the world. And whereas the office of the Professional Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public servants. And whereas the office of the Professional Municipal Clerk provides a professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies and agencies of government at all levels. And whereas Professional Municipal Clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. And whereas the Professional Municipal Clerk serves as the, as the information center on functions of local government and community. And whereas Professional Municipal Clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the Professional Municipal Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. And where it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk. Now therefore Mitch Colvin, Mayor of the City of Fayetteville, North Carolina, on behalf of this city council and more than two hundred and eight thousand citizens to hereby honorably proclaim the week of April thirtieth through May sixth, twenty twenty-three as Professional Municipal Clerks Week. And witness whereof, the mayor set his hand and caused the great seal, City of Fayetteville, to be affixed the twenty-eighth day of April. So, thank you.
And Deputy Clerk, you will.
I'm the Deputy Clerk.
He's just extra.
Yeah, well, you were there when I took my oath.
Alright, if we could have a motion to approve the agenda of, uh, Councilmember Hondros. Is there a second by Councilmember Jensen, thank you. Any discussion, see and none asked for your votes in favor? Oh, we have a discussion, yes ma'am?
Um, so based off of the conversations I've had with staff, apparently we will be asking to give direction on some information that was given that we had moved forward about the mental health co-responder, is that not right?
We're giving y'all an update. Strategic public safety.
So an email is, I decline, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. See no other discussion, those in favor of the approval of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, close note, thank you. Um, red, we have, um, on Court McGill, we have, um, eight, one vote. Okay. City Council Policies Review Committee Recommendations, is that, um, is that Councilmember Jensen?
If I may, first, um, so what I wanted to say about four point oh one, I know that it has been out in the public that we're redoing the policies and things like that. First of all, I would like to thank, um, the mayor asked me to chair this committee. And I would like to thank Councilmember Hare and Councilmember Thompson for all their hard work. I will say, um, I've been on a lot of committees, but I will tell you, I think this is one that we have met more consistently than any committee that I have ever been on. And thank you for your hard work. What I want people to realize is, because, you know, I know people are starting to talk about things, what people need to realize is that we are looking back at policies that were done back in nineteen eighty-six.
Sixty-six.
And well, that's right, there was one that was sixty-six. But the one that people are, um, talking about, that had not been revived since nineteen eighty-six. Um, just to give you a little bit of what we went through, that we are crossing our Ts and dotting our Is. One of them was, you are not allowed to smoke in council chambers and you are not allowed to smoke during a council meeting. That was a policy that we had. So that goes to show that we have gone through this part of the process and, and decided, I shouldn't say decided, have discussed which we feel is the best way to move this city with staff with us. And we, we started these meetings at ten o'clock. We were staying so long that we were so in it, we decided to come at eight o'clock so we could keep going. So, um, I would like to thank staff, um, especially Jeff and Jody for being there and the Assistant Attorney. Yes, thank you, thank you. Um, so when we're talking about these things and one of the one questions that we had is what we decided to do is we said, let's have the meetings. And we sent out an email to every council member to discuss the changes that we made. And if you had any questions, to please send them to us so we could talk it in our next two weeks or week and a half afterwards. So we did that after every meeting. Our last meeting, we were done with the middle part of, as I will say, the elephant. We have this big elephant we have to eat. We took part of the elephant was, which was what we did. And this is what we came up with. So I haven't received any emails back, but I did receive that they would like to bring it to a work session and we are here more than happy to talk about it. The one that I have seen on Facebook that is running, that is going around is the one that for somebody to sign up to speak, we did the cutoff at five o'clock. It is a suggestion, it is what we had talked to with staff. But when these policies came out, fax machines were a new thing. Fax machines were just coming in. The only way you could really sign up for anything is to call or walk down here and do it. We learned over COVID, things changed and they changed quick. Now people, if they want to come speak, they can email, they can call, they, they probably could even text at one point. But they can do, the, what is out there for our citizens to be here and to speak is much more wide than it was in eighty-six. We asked staff, if somebody comes up till seven o'clock, there has to be a staff member down there. We have to pay somebody to be down there, no big deal. But there's really not that many people that come at the last minute. The other thing that we discussed during this is that people give us literature. Staff has to be prepared for that. We've seen it where people come up, they have to give it to staff and then it comes around to us. What we have always said is, we don't like getting things five minutes before it has to go. When we do our dinner meetings, we have a list of who is speaking. So we know, and if there's an issue, that we can make sure that the person has someone to speak to afterwards. But if it just comes to us, it's, it's, it's another process. So I, before we get started, I just want everybody to know that this is not written in stone. We have put it out there and we are up for discussion. But we really are trying to get with the times and move our city forward and work smarter to get things more organized and make it as professional as possible.
Thank you, Councilmember Jensen. Uh, city manager, who staff is gonna present this?
Well, I'm not sure that we have planned for a presentation, but I'm happy to, um, walk through the thirty-seven pages which I'll say y'all are acquainted with, um.
I don't have anything doing morning.
So, so if I may, my, my question is, we have sent this out, um, we've sent it out quite a few times.
Once a week.
Yes, so I guess what I was asking is when I got, when I got the phone call and said this, this was wanting to come to a work session. And I said, great, because our goal as a committee was to have this done by May thirty-first. So when we start off, that was our goal, so we asked to do it in May. So my question is, does anybody have any concerns that they would like to go through that we can talk about it and discuss it as a council?
Yes, ma'am, Councilmember Ingram.
Uh, Councilmember Benavent says he has one.
Oh, um, Councilmember Benavent?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Um, I hear you on item one, two, zero point nine, the public forum time change. Um, when it comes to a staff person needing to be paid, I think whether we have someone already down there or we have a signup sheet, um, that, that's something that we can surmount. I know ideally, you know, we won't get paperwork last minute. But then again, sometimes we get, um, documents for work sessions last minute. So that's just something that we have to surmount as well when it happens. So I haven't heard really a compelling reason to change the time from seven to five. And I know that we wanna move forward with the times and there will be a day when everyone knows how to use a Q R code. But I think the kinds of folks that we, uh, see coming in very often to city council meetings, the, the regulars, um, the folks that are in the audience, um, I think we still owe it to them that should they be interested in speaking during a public forum, that they be allowed to, uh, not worry about operating any sort of electronic devices they might not be, uh, comfortable with and be allowed to sign up. I just don't see any harm in, in keeping it at seven P M. Um, and then the reasons for moving it to five, I, I, I didn't find very compelling. So, um, I don't know how we would go about approving all of this except for one, or perhaps I'm the only one who feels this way, um, but I, I, one, two, zero point nine is the only one that I have, um, issue with supporting.
I think that's one, two, zero point two, A, one, I believe, one, oh, one, two, zero point nine.
Correct.
Okay. Well, what's the, uh, normally we refer, I had a work session, we'll refer this to staff. Is that Chairman Jensen, your thoughts on this? Or, um, what's the plan of action for this item, uh, city manager?
Please.
Um, would recommend that if that is one of the items that, um, uh, we would just mark that with the clerk's office and, um, when it comes to council for full consideration, that may be one that separate and vote up or down one way or the other. Um, I think the proposition was to leave it as it is, um, uh, was what I heard. And then that would be, you could do that in a variety of ways. The mayor's not here and this was in his interest to, um, have this conversation. So it could be that, um, that could be pulled and the others could move forward. Bring that back to a work session when the mayor is able to attend. Um, it is a significant change, but it is minor language change about whether it's five o'clock or some other time. So my proposal would be that unless there are other items, you can just pull that out and you can figure out whether you'd like to do a up or down vote in council chambers during the regular meeting or you'd like to actually bring that and other elements back to this group next month after everyone has had a chance to reflect on.
Chairman Jensen, um, Councilmember Ingram.
Thank you, so before I go to my, my question, um, I did have a question about, well, it's not my question, but it just triggered. Matt, if, if the policy says seven, why is it, why is it promoted five?
Are you asking why that decision was made?
No, 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 it's promoted five.
Promoted.
But if the policy is seven, then why is it promoted to be five?
Recommended to be changed to five.
No, 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 no. It's on city website, it's promoted five P M, but the policy says seven, so how did we even get to five P M?
I think what happened, I think what happened was during COVID, when no one could come to the building, it was moved to five, uh, to adjust for, um, the contact, um, remotely.
Okay, so maybe that probably should get changed in the end, and on, to be back to what policy says?
Absolutely, I think, I think it had already been done.
It's not.
Can I ask?
Yep, Councilmember Jensen.
I got my answer, I was just wanting to make sure that what's, what's out there publicly matches what is the, what is, what is in our policy. So my actual, um, as a matter of attorney, because we're, we, we decided, and this came by way of council, former councilwoman Kingston, because we've decided to, um, go this route and look at, you know, all of our policies, will we need to have a public hearing once we decide to? Okay, thank you.
Alright, anyone else in the first round? No, Councilmember Benavent, uh, anyone else in first, oh, alright, uh, second round, Councilmember Jensen.
So, thank you, Councilmember Ingram, because that was a point that I did wanna make at the beginning of this. What we did find, um, out when we were during COVID, we did have to change things. As in, you know, setting up for Zoom calls, you know, staff had to take a lot of time. And for somebody just to say, okay, I'm gonna be on Zoom, then everybody had to kinda change and do things. So that, that's a perfect example of what we were going back and forth with, of what we had to kind of, this is why we did it this way at this point. So, um, you are correct, it was, um, at five because of COVID and the policy did read seven.
Alright, as committee chair, uh, anyone else on round two?
Oh, so.
Alright, Councilmember Ingram, round two.
Just as I'm understanding the process of where we are, you've only kinda gone, gone through a little bit. You're kinda at midpoint.
I'm sorry.
In the total policies?
In the, I guess in your process, cause what I heard you say was, we got through, we ate a piece of the elephant and then we were asked to bring it to the council. And so we need to go back and go through the rest of the policies.
So this is our book, of, yes, of everything that we had to do. So what we decided to do to be, to eat the elephant, we did, we started out with one fifteen point one. And it was all city council and city council meeting procedures. Because of the book being so big and staff had a lot to do with this, with, this was kind of our piece of the elephant that we could make happen quickly. We tried to get all this done and then we will go to, we'll bring back, we will send emails out after our meetings and then we will bring it back instead of us having it on consensus and having the whole book on consensus.
So now you just need direction to go, move forward and start on the second half and then the whole thing will come back to us at a regular meeting to approve.
What, as a committee, and please correct me if I'm wrong, as a committee, we were hoping that we could get?
Disapproved, yes, with the exception of, so it's still gonna come to our regular meeting.
Right, so.
Okay, okay, so that's the direction here.
So do you have a consensus motion? Alright.
If I'm not mistaken, staff has their part left to direct us on what we can change, what we can't change. Once we get our recommendations back from staff, I think we will have another work session to make sure if anybody have any more questions, but staff has, we can move forward and then bring it to council forum.
Oh, okay, I'm, okay, I'm confused now.
You're right.
So, so this is just only what y'all have talked about, not necessarily staff saying you can actually do it or not.
No, 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 we're talking about the staff part of policy. We have to hear from Stormwater, we have to hear from the police department.
Oh, okay, I got you.
Alright, so Madam Chair, uh, what is your consensus? All right, so Madam Chair, uh, what is your consensus motion recommendation?
So I, you might have to help me out on this. I'm thinking, okay, you go first.
I think the consensus motion is absent the policy that Councilman Benaventez mentioned, consensus would be to move the other items in the package forward to the next or upcoming council meeting for consideration, uh, for adoption by the full council. Understanding that the council's policies that include the staff such as Stormwater and other things that, um, Councilman Thompson mentioned, is, is forthcoming and that'll come back to a work session for discussion before it too then would be approved. I think that's.
Right. But I, I was thinking that the way we normally do consensus is that all of these will go forward to consensus and on Monday, because normally it will be on Monday, then this particular item, like what is it, one-twenty-point-two would be twenty.
One-twenty-point-nine.
Okay, then that item would be four for an up or down vote, any other to go forward. How do we normally do any other items?
That would be my motion, yes.
All right.
Somebody on my team like to second that?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the consensus motion? All right, do you want to ask for your vote? Those who favor the consensus motion, ring your hand. Uh, one-two, uh, three, unanimous. Uh, nine-zero, Paul McGill.
Thank you. So, so if I may, again to my committee, thank you very much. To staff, thank you very much. Y'all led us in a very good path. Thank you.
All right, item four-point-zero-two, uh, city manager, who you want to have? This item, um, American Rescue Plan Act.
Will anybody ever, Chris Colley?
Anybody.
Anybody, just anybody.
Lexi.
Derek.
A, B, C. Anybody but Chris.
Lexi.
Mr. Colley. While they're working on that, I'm gonna share something from my meeting with the Garrison Commander on Tuesday. Fort Bragg is adding twenty-six-hundred more troops, plus family members and children. So the impact's gonna be around fifty-five-hundred new people that are gonna be touching Fort Bragg. So we're hoping they all live in Cumberland County, but we, we assume they may not, but twenty-six-hundred more are coming. And they will, they have over fifty job openings for mental health counselors. So I know Councilmember Jensen's son, I believe, just got his designation and, and graduated. So if you have kids that are asking dad and mom, what should I do, mental health counselor, pick your man. Thank you.
Since I, I've got a second, she does the, the last part. Um, so I got an experienced dogwood, kind of interesting. Plus I, I lived down here through it, I, I worked at our booth through it and also volunteered. I do know that, uh, one of our downtown restaurants had their, uh, record sales in one day broken. Um, and I got a lot of really good feedback on the social district, a lot of customers and restaurateurs. Uh, so I, I gotta say, especially Cool Springs did Fourth Friday, um, at the same time Dogwood's happening, people going from down there and what caused, um, the, the intersection where the social district ends and, and Dogwood, uh, begins was really very controlled and the police did a great job of making sure people followed the rules. Uh, it was just a really, really cool time with baseball happening and Fourth Friday and, and Dogwood, it was, it was tough to, up to sleep late, um, through the weekend. So, yeah, it was a really fun time. So, uh, I'm gonna take you through a little bit of the history of, of what our department's been doing to, to work up to this item being here tonight. Uh, just to remind, a couple of council actions that got us here. So first off, uh, we got a little over forty million dollars worth of American Rescue Plan and council broke itself up into three groups that really looked at different issues around community livability, uh, uh, business and economic development. And, uh, third category that I didn't get any money in, so I'll call it without, let's write it right off. But, uh, one of those categories that y'all did ask, ask our team to be responsible for was the business and economic development. Um, and so we put five million aside for that. Uh, we're wrapping up three million dollars of business assistance and corridor improvement grants that went out to our community. Um, we have a million dollars that we partnered with the Partnership for Children on childcare recruitment and retention, because we talked to the partnership. One of the biggest gaps was keeping qualified childcare workers and getting them hired and onboard. So they're running that program for us right now and that's underway. And then the last program, you know, we couldn't do everything all at once, and so we, we were working through this one and planning it while, while spending that other three million dollars to get another, you know, getting workforce development initiatives. And so tonight we're gonna talk a little bit about that funding and what we've done to get where we are tonight and what our recommendation is moving forward. Also during the FY twenty-three budget, uh, Mayor Colvin asked council to set aside two hundred thousand dollars for, for youth, uh, mentoring and at-risk youth initiative. Um, and so two items have, have come to council as, as kind of like quick presentation updates. Um, one, we funded the Tulsa Initiative for a hundred thousand dollars for a two-year period. And then we also funded, um, a mentoring program with, uh, this kind of sponsored by Judge King through community here at different high schools throughout the area. Um, that leaves us with fifty thousand dollars remaining. We got a couple more months in the fiscal year, so we want to figure out how to, how to spend this money. And so luckily enough, uh, through our annual grant process, which you guys approved the budget for last week, um, we put out what's called a notice of funding availability. And so through the months of November, December, and January, local nonprofits and community groups apply for funding to our department. And then my team gets together, looks at that stuff, tries to figure out how it fits in with our different grants and funding sources and where we can make the most impact. Then ultimately we recommend that to y'all through a, a citizen-led process and then y'all approve it. Um, we had a lot more grant requests this year than we've ever had. I, I'm kind of proud of our marketing and our outreach efforts, uh, Derek talking to our economic development manager, talking to a lot of folks who, who really worked with youth on workforce development type initiatives, but also talking, uh, uh, with our community relations manager, Alex Baker, and, and really getting the word out with marketing communications, pushing things on social media. Um, so we're kind of a victim of our own success there that we got a lot more grants than we have money available. But we were extremely fortunate that we had this money and a couple of other pots of money set aside. And so, um, if council is amenable to the recommendations coming up, we'll be able to say that we funded every single person that applied, um, which is pretty cool. Um, so essentially if we can fund some of these agencies that apply, we're stretching our CDVG dollars a little bit further. Um, and we're making a pretty big impact in the community with this one-time funding that we have from the American Rescue Plan and the general. So here's the organizations that, that we're looking at. From here, there's about ten slides. Each one of us, one of them is in-depth on these organizations. I just kind of briefly go over it here, and then if y'all want to dive into the individual ones, those slides are there, they're also in here and interactive. Um, so the first one up is Mom's Village, which is a doula and lactation consultant training. Uh, usually women, um, who have a high school education and through a year of training, taking a couple of community college classes and doing some, um, apprenticeship, they can start making upwards sixty, sixty-five thousand dollars on the first year. Uh, that's a pretty significant impact in our community. Uh, so this will be a two-year program to fund, to fund the, uh, coordination of that and to, to stipend as they go through. Um, our FTCC Job Skills Training Program has been stable, uh, for our department for quite a few years now. We helped buy instruction kits, textbooks, things like that. And so since we needed to put our CDVG money elsewhere, we, we reserved about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars here to be able to do this over the next two to three years. Uh, Service Source is, is a group that we just funded for the first time last year. Um, and so they typically have been getting twenty-five thousand dollars a year. So we recommend in funding them for two to three years at that twenty-five thousand dollar. Um, and that's really about removing those barriers for veterans who are looking for employment. Uh, Crest, which has a very long name, it's on a couple of slides from now, um, really does a lot with, um, job skills training for, for, for adult, young adults with special needs. Um, so, so they'll plug people in with a grocery store or something like that. They'll do a lot of the job training to help them understand what, what it looks like to work in that job, and they'll actually have special classrooms to teach people to perform those jobs before they actually go into the workplace. Um, high school coding is something that, um, uh, our economic development manager Derek MacArthur came up with and talking with several folks. Um, so we don't have a ton of details about it right now. We're gonna have to put out an RFP and find the right folks. But what we would be doing is targeting certain high schools in our community and offering coding classes at the high school level, um, as, as basics to kind of introduce them in, in, uh, that, uh, that particular industry. Uh, with the Housing Authority, uh, they have a program that they just started last year, and it's a instruction and job skills trainings for mostly single moms who are, uh, their kids are at school and they're able to take those classes during the day. Um, and so the Housing Authority's actually hired a couple of those individuals as maintenance folks on their staff if they're having trouble filling those positions. Um, our, we have some community ambassadors through our Choice Neighborhoods program. Two of the Housing Authority residents went through this program and got jobs out of that as well. Then we're, uh, we're kind of fleshing out a program with our, uh, mid-Carolina workforce development folks on youth job shadowing. They already have a program in place. They don't have enough money to hit a, a lot of folks. And so we're, we're able to use some of this money to help expand that and really go after some of the at-risk kids that, to help them understand, you know, job skills, resume writing, and then ultimately doing job shadowing as part of a pre-approval list of businesses to sign up with. Um, and then we have one that, um, uh, Kim Toon and Derek have worked on quite a bit along with LaShelle from our, uh, city attorney's office, and, and that is to, uh, kind of, uh, hopefully address some of the, uh, our patient improvement we found with our disparity study in helping, um, uh, some, uh, minority communities, uh, learn how to pass the general contractor's test. And so there's a lot of steps involved in that. We've kind of got a program envisioned where we can talk about credit counseling, creditworthiness, saving money, and ultimately helping get, uh, think about like SAT prep, but for general contractors licensing, and so we would help them buy the books, and then they would take classes in order to prep to take the general contractor's test. Um, so that's gonna be really cool, and that would take place at, um, the, in the FSU Innovation Entrepreneurship Hub. So that's what we have for the million dollars for the workforce development. And then on the youth side of things, we have that fifty thousand dollars left over. Um, one of my, uh, community relations specialists was out in the community one day and saw this really cool mentoring group over at G V Myers, and they're called Roots Mentoring. Um, and they do a lot of really cool programming. She ended up going to several of their Saturday events where they had, um, all these kids out there and they were really teaching them like, you know, financial literacy and, and adulting skills, and they just seemed really awesome and really passionate, and they're all doing it on volunteer time right now. Um, and so we worked with them to put together a twenty-five thousand dollar one-time budget that would help them reach more kids and also provide the, the FSU students who are volunteering for that program a stipend for their time.
Excellent.
Um, next up is the Two-Six Project. Um, this kind of pairs with the Tulsa Initiative. They're, they're, they've kind of grown out of that. Um, and what Two-Six does is it really aims at student athletes that are identified by principals as, as being at risk. Um, and then it, it, it works with those kids on team building, leadership training, and, and community service, um, to, to help move them beyond the, the, I might be put on academic probation as a student athlete kind of stage that they're in. So that's what we've got. I can go into a bit more detail, but I think that kind of hit it all. Um, I'll take any questions you got?
Of course. Well, good inspiration. I saw, um, then Councilmember Thompson, then Herr, then Ingram, and then Banks McGaw.
I just want, uh, thank you, Mayor Protem. I just want a clarification, uh, because you have general funding down here, but you're gonna use the extra fifty thousand dollars that you have for the ARPA fund to fund these, correct, Chris?
Uh, no, so last year in the budget, we got two hundred thousand dollars for youth mentoring activities. We've already spent one-fifty. This is the remaining fifty of it, and that's in the general fund.
My next question came from the Two-Six Project, and I went ahead and I read ahead a little bit, and it emphasized certain schools. What does it mean by certain schools?
Uh, yeah, so they have specific schools that, that they're looking at going into where, where they identify these kids that they call, that, that, that are, um, at promise. Um, I think it's a term that they use. So, so they're looking at certain schools that have challenged student athletes.
So all schools don't have challenged athletes?
Some are worse than others.
Right.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Herr.
Thank you, team. Um, Chris, how, how are we gauging these groups that we're giving the funding to, that they're doing what it is we are expecting to happen, to take place?
Uh, so that's a great question. Uh, one of the mismers that people, uh, when this is, they think we give out grants. No, we, we contract for services, right? And so during that contract part, we actually talk about what are the milestones you're gonna meet? What exactly are you gonna do with this money? We break it down into a line item budget that says how much is going for salaries, how much of this is going for office supplies, how much is going for field trips for these students? And then we have to end to come up with metrics, because we gotta report back to the federal government too. And so we say, hey, how many kids are you touching and what are the outcome measures you're gonna come up with? All of that goes into their contract. And then Mr. MacArthur, our economic development manager, will have to monitor them over the, the two or three-year period in order to make sure they're hitting those goals.
Okay, and, 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 and one of the reasons, uh, my fellow colleagues that I asked, I remember back in, in the day, we used to have a lot of nonprofits that were doing the same thing, you know, doing whatever it is that they do. Right in this room, we had those discussions. Hey, we wanted to make sure, we wanted to see, uh, how that they were moving forward with the resources that we were giving them from the city. So that was the purpose of it.
Measurable resources. Right. Thank you, Councilmember Herr. Councilmember Ring?
No, I don't, I don't necessarily have a question. I just wanted to get to say, great job, um, and to answer, well, answer a question, that was it. Um, majority of these groups are already doing the work. And so last year or whenever, we've, we floated the micro safety grant, um, I was talking about nonprofits, we, depending on where you were or not, um, if you were here on council or not, council said we wanted to be able to get more, get dollars into the hands of the entities that were actually out here doing the work. Because what they were saying was, we need help, help in others. And so we are at a place where now we can actually do that. Uh, Two-Six Project, Roots Mentoring, uh, they do a lot of work within, you know, my district, es- especially with the youth. Tulsa Initiative, I'm pretty sure you've been to a lot of their events. They are doing a great job to build it up. And then to, uh, something Mr. Colley, um, stated a while ago, um, what he recognized when he came in is that a lot of nonprofits weren't necessarily set up, um, to be able to provide measurable, uh, outcomes and stuff. And so that, their department now is able to help them be able to get funding and be able to pr- turn over results and reports. But to, to these individuals, they are already doing the work, which is why I think Chris Colley was so confident to recommend, you know, that we, we give them the funding. And if you don't know about these organizations, I highly suggest that you go introduce yourself to them. Uh, I don't mind setting them up. Um, most of them are based in the district. Um, but I, I, I'm, I'm all in support of this, 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 um, allocation.
Thank you, Councilmember Ingram. Councilmember Banks McGaw?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Um, Chris Colley, this, everything is great. I'm happy to see, uh, we're pushing through and we're giving back to the youth. Uh, we're actually allocating more funding for them. Um, I have several questions, and stop me if needed to, Mayor Protem, it'll be the second round. Um, with these ARPA funds, um, partnership, because I know, um, the schools offer some of these programs, the county, even the colleges offer, uh, youth programs. Um, so is that something, have we had conversations with them, or do we plan to? offer, uh, youth programs, um, so is that something, have we had conversations with them or do we plan to?
Uh, yeah, I think I put that in the, in, in the CCAM if, if you all have a chance. I'd be looking at it right now. So, so a lot of what, uh, Derek did as economic development, uh, kind of lead on this, was talk to Cumberland County Schools, talk to FTCC and that. And talk to a lot of groups that are out there already, mid-Carolina, like I mentioned. We even talked to FCDC and said, like, what are some of our workforce needs? And then we talked about what this grant money requires and how we could best match those things up. Uh, so we spent a lot of time doing that, that's why I kind of, you know, we've had this money for almost a year. That, that was kind of that lead-up activity, making sure that we put it in the right places.
Okay, and, and the reason I ask that too, because you know, partnership, the more the merrier, um, that's more money and it, it'll be a bigger, um, impact to the community. Uh, when we talk about the qualifications, like prime example for FTC, uh, job skills, who are responsible for the qualification or determine on who's eligible? And not just for the FTC, but all of those, um, candidates?
Yeah, so there, there's a little bit of a partnership and that, that kind of goes back to something council member Hare said about us, us holding folks accountable. Um, and so I've got kind of a two-person front on that. Uh, Mr. Baker, our Community Relations Manager, is really moving into a position of nonprofit capacity building and really training nonprofits on how to use federal funds. And then Derek's job, uh, Mr. MacArthur, their Economic Development, has to monitor those contracts and make sure they're following through. He also reviews every single reimbursement invoice that comes through to make sure that it's allowed. Uh, now, all the requirements for this money with the ARPA, um, and this kind of goes back to council member Thompson's question. So with the American Rescue Plan money, uh, the language that the federal government uses is, is communities that were disproportionately impacted by COVID. Um, and so we really do essentially aim these things, just like we do with our Community Development Block Grant money, at low and moderate income.
Well, I know we're doing that, but once we fund them, just trying to make sure that they're doing.
Right, and like I said, these are contracts for services, so they, they have to follow kind of the guidelines and we set them up for success the best we can and then we hold them accountable.
Okay, and then also too, um, I notice, um, it's a lot of effort towards high school students. Um, what about middle school? Like, do we have, I don't know if we have anything here, um, as far as like, uh, summer jobs, paid summer jobs for the youth? Because when we think about high school students, they're able to work part-time around high school, you know, in high school after they've been in school. But middle school students, you know, I think we should be trying to focus towards them also so that once they get to high school, they can have, you know, that experience and kind of, they can gain additional experience and then they'll be ready for the workforce once they complete, uh, high school, so.
Derek, do you have something to add there?
Uh, yes, um, we so, oh, excuse me, um, we spoke with, um, the COG, um, over that, um, that's why we, uh.
Let, let him get to the mic real quick.
Can you introduce him again?
Uh, my name is Derek MacArthur, I am the Economic Development Manager. Uh, we spoke with, uh, the, the COG, um, and talked about what we can do to look at those getting in younger ages. Um, and they spoke with the business owners and getting permits and time that they can work. No challenges was there? Um, so that's why we starting this with ages sixteen up to as high as twenty-four right now. Those working permits was a challenge with different industries. Uh, cause we're doing this on, you get to choose your industries that you want to go forward with, not us making you just go and work like job that you want.
And that, that's great, but in the future, I hope that we can, you know, kind of expand and look for, cause I remember in middle school being twelve years old, summer jobs, working at the recreation centers, cleaning up and doing different things at the park. Just to keep the kids a little, um, a little busy, um, I think that.
Thank you, council member, thank you, council member Banks McGlock, and council member Benevente.
Derek, you said COG, you were working with who now? What was that acronym?
Men and men.
Yeah. That, that, that's, that's exactly where my questions were going. Um, we have the Next Generation Workforce Committee and at some point, probably the FTC, the Crest and the High School Coding, uh, in addition to the youth job shadowing, I think if you guys can make a note to like, update that committee on, on, maybe in a deeper dive, um, just so that that committee isn't, um, doubling back on work that's already being done, uh, as we try to narrow our focus. Because certainly next-gen workforce can include all of those and more. Um, so just in side note there, and then specifically as it relates to youth job shadowing, um, again, it's fine to get this information at that committee meeting, uh, but I wanna hear more about the potential for placement and then paid internship for those participants. Um, I think that would be a good use of ninety grand. Um, on the slide, youth job shadowing, it talks about interview prep, um, resume cover letter, um, and, and job search placement assistance. I think those three things are great, I don't think they're ninety thousand dollars. Um, but if we're gonna place people, or place young people with businesses that otherwise couldn't afford to have them and couldn't afford to train them, but they get liability issues, uh, taken care of, they get payment for those young people taken care of, all of a sudden they're more likely to, to, to receive them. That's a great use of ninety grand.
And it's also included in that.
Yeah.
Also, one of the big things that's not included is we pick a list, everything.
Sure.
It's also some, a lot of those sauce cubes.
Sure. Yeah, I, so I just want a lot more on that in that committee, if you guys can just make note, um, to come visit with us.
Alright, thank you, council member Benevente, now we can move to round two, uh, council member Hare.
Yes, uh, going back and looking at the, the, uh, general, general contractor prep. And I did hear, I did hear, uh, that we were helping with, uh, contractors to become GCs and improving how they can help them as far as getting insured and bonding to whatever level the bonding still is today. Uh, what type of participation are we having with that? I, I, I've set in on a few of those over the years. And the participation on those first go-rounds was big, I remember we did one in this room. But where are we now? Do we have a lot of participation that, of folks trying to learn and do the prepping and, and, and on and on? I mean, I, I see these other things with painting, carpentry, that, that's great, but I was talking about as far as, you know, wanna become a GC, how, how to set up their business or, or, and on and on like that, who can answer that for me?
Uh, so, so this is really the, the first endeavor of our department working through this.
And where is this done at?
So this is gonna be done at FSU at the Innovation Hub.
Okay.
Yeah, and so it's, it's, it's kind of a collaboration with them. Um, I know there's been other programs in the past, I think there's been programs where we've talked to people who were general contractors about coming to work for the city. And this Toon could kind of answer some of those questions. But this is really about, like you said, training folks who are currently just, you know, a painter or, or carpenter, training them to become a general contractor, so that they can take on those larger jobs. Um, and so this goes into the insurance and bonding requirements, connections to that, it also helps teach the test. There's also a piece about, uh, you know, credit repair, um, for folks who might have been in some, you know, financial troubles and need to figure out how to get stuff kind of straight as they move to be a general contractor. And so it's really aimed at folks who might have some of those barriers preventing them from getting those larger contracts and working for the city. Uh, but this will really be our first go at it and, and we're hoping that we can, uh, get a pretty sizable class. But the first thing is to do an RFP to get, uh, an instructor for the course and then they kind of determine the class size from there.
And the class will be taught where?
Thank you, councilman Hare.
Thank you, uh.
Okay, uh, council member Ingram, round two.
I just have a quick question. So, um, the people that were coming to learn to be contractors and we are going to fund it and, you know, get them all up and running, which I'm, I'm full support of, I think it's a great idea. But I do have to ask the question. If, if they go and they graduate and they become a, um, contractor, can they go to Massachusetts? Or can they leave to go build in Raleigh? Can, are we, I, I'm just asking, you know, it, it's kind of, when you go to school and you get it paid for, they say, okay, we will send you to school at work, we will send you to go get your college education, but you need to, or whatever education. Your HVAC, but you need to sign a contract that you're gonna stay in our city or vicinity for two years. You know, get a job, are we doing anything like that? I'm not trying to hold people down, but we have the need and we need people to work.
So, uh, you know, I think it's just like those big GCs that are coming from Raleigh to do our work. You know, uh, that, that as we can get some more homegrown general contractors in place, that, that city does start putting goals through the disparity study where there, there is work in their hometown that they can do. We haven't really considered, uh, you know, something that says like you will, and I'm not really, it seems like it'd be challenging to say you will, you know, bid on X amount of jobs here, kind of thing.
So, if I may, maybe it's because if you just get your general contractor's license, you're, you will never compete with the big leagues in Raleigh in the first two or three years unless you have lots of equity and lots of loan ability. I mean, it's just not gonna happen. So my question is, the people that are coming from Raleigh that have the, the big deals, and I might be stretching it on state law and things like that, but is there any way that, I don't know if anybody's understanding what I'm trying to say, I don't want them to, to get it and then leave or take it and leave because we don't have anything for them or help them grow their business.
Like how we're doing with the home fire program, the down payment program where we, it's like, you can't resell it to.
That's interesting point. Now, um, um, Ms. Toon actually can speak to this whole idea from the disparity study as well, about how we're trying to create that, um, local.
And so the group we met, we already have some identified people that have come to us, there are some of our small. So we have identified, um, already a group that is currently our subcontractors who are wanting to move up to that general contractor. And so when we met as a group, there were some barriers that were identified and we discussed them throughout disparity study. And so when we met, that's why we were trying to build a whole person for, for the financial need and even the character. Because we're gonna have some of them that we know that have some legal challenges. And you cannot get your general contractor's license if you have those legal barriers. And so Assistant Attorney, um, LaShelle has helped us on that part to see how we can help those persons and also with the credit. So we're trying, we have, um, we met through the contractors course, there's probably, I would say, over fifty people that were interested in this program. Um, but we're still trying to build that criteria because we also have to acknowledge our funding source. So our funding source is also is going to tell us who we're gonna serve.
Alright, thank you. Uh, anything else, city manager?
Uh, we're just, um, very quickly, um, I know it may have been some more questions here. I'd like to just remind council, this is the success of your committee. The committee, three committees met and said, how can we put the ARPA money back in the community? And not once, but twice y'all met. And that was something that y'all put together. And so it's good questions about the outcomes, but I would still want y'all to overlook the fact that it was the process that you guys did to work in to actually set this up to take advantage of these opportunities.
Thank you, uh, council member Ingram. Alright, um, council member Hondros.
I was just gonna speak to the, uh, the question that was asked about, um, talent, you know, getting cert certification and then leaving. And while that's a good question, a valid question, I think we see that more on the career path side, you know, staff getting certain certifications. When you're talking about building a company, those folks typically would say, largely, they may bid work at different places. Somebody builds a general contracting company, a concrete finishing company, they're not necessarily gonna pick that up and move it. My experience has been that threat's not as big on the entrepreneurial side as it is on the career path side.
Very good point, council member Thompson.
Uh, Mayor Proton, I was just gonna pat staff and Chris and Derek on the back because we went to DC praising about Fayetteville being a success story when it comes to spending ARPA money. And I think you guys did a great job distributing the money and creating the programs to help use them, so thanks a lot.
And just to put you on the spot, Mr. Colley, the eight million that, I think council member Thompson, were you in, I think you were there, council member Banks, Washington, uh, the eight million that, that we needed to do some additional, uh, paperwork on? Any update on, on the HUD side? No? Okay, not, okay, alright, thank you.
Mayor Proton, ready to make a motion.
Uh, alright, um, they have asked, council, they have asked for a recommendation. Uh, council member Benevente.
Thank you, Mayor Proton, I move that we provide consensus to support funding the proposed initiatives for workforce development and youth mentoring.
Excellent, okay, second, uh, council member Hare. Uh, any discussion, see you, none asked for your vote, those in favor, raise your hand, thank you. I believe that's unanimous, uh, Fort McGill, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Um, while there, uh, eat, rest, and, um, before you leave, I wanted chief to come on up here, um, to be aware. Another item, the, the little tidbits I wanted you all to know about as our senior team in the city. Uh, the Garrison Commander told me that not counting the twenty-six hundred Fort Bragg as of last week is thirty-one hundred housing units short. So what that means is I think you're gonna see developers building more houses, probably more apartment complexes. So as we go, as they, he predicts, and this is not fidelity or, uh, any of the Wall Street, uh, uh, bankers, but their, their advisors are telling the Garrison, third quarter is gonna be the problem in the economy with the recession. Just be aware of that, after the summertime, kind of the fall lull, uh, but there's, there's still a huge need. Fayetteville, and we've lived through probably fifteen of the last, well, I'm older, much older than council member Jensen, council member Hare. Councilman Hare and I have lived through fifteen. But, well, he's the dean, he's the dean.
You always call him.
Y'all are a lot older than me, I'm like.
We are a lot older. But we are insulated, uh, you all need to be aware. We are quite insulated because we have, we are the largest neighbor to the largest.
Military installation.
Thank you, good evening, council. Uh, was asked, come speak tonight and give you some updates on our public safety strategic items. Uh, we're gonna talk about some of our projects to use our LPR program and the Shot Spotter update. In addition to that, with the state's armed medical health training, this department has gone through a thousand years ago. Talk about our experience, our cares, what we're accomplishing through our, our. Start with, uh, Major Joyce, project man, or the main project, the Shot Spotter.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
As chief was saying, uh, one of the first things I will talk about will be FUSIS. And FUSIS, of course, where we're able to use that as a camera, uh, registration. And one of the things that I want to stress, registering your camera does not allow the Fayetteville Police Department access to your live data, no live stream. Uh, that is just to allow us to see where those cameras are on an active map when we log in, um, to our website and connect Fayetteville to, to be able to see those. Um, we can see that virtual database and a map of those cameras, if something might be considered potential evidence should officers or detectives, uh, respond in, in the vicinity of a crime scene. Businesses can also participate in the camera registration and they can also take it one step further by installing a core at their business. And once they have that core, that a core allows us to see, uh, live stream footage coming from their business. They can allow which cameras they want us to see, they don't have to give us access to any. And they can have the ability to revoke that consent anytime as being, as a voluntary program. Right now, we currently have five hundred fifteen registered cameras and two hundred twenty-six integrated cameras. And the integrated cameras will be the ones we have, um, and access to. And again, for anyone who wants to sign up, um, when our site went live, it takes less than a minute, uh, during online secure portal. And again, that's at connectfayetteville.com. Move to LPR data, which is our license plate reader technology. Right now, we have all sixty license plate readers in operation in their position along major thoroughfares throughout the city. And of course, this is something that we spoke about, each of the quarterly, um, reviews, um, with council, but they have resulted in over seven hundred. But they have resulted in over seven hundred felony misdemeanor offenses having been charged. Again, multiple, uh, felonious amounts of illegal narcotics, cocaine, marijuana, methamphetamines, fentanyl have been seized as a result of this technology. Tens of thousands of dollars associated criminal activity, along with multiple weapons who have also been seized. Over a hundred stolen vehicles recovered and over thirty vehicles seized. And one of the biggest things is when we have someone who goes, this might have some type of cognitive impairment associated with it, and allows us to, you know, their license plate into the license plate reader system to be able to track that. Someone's loved one. And I'll let Chief, uh, just do an update on success stories from this weekend.
So as Manager alluded to, uh, Dogwood Festival went off at night. Had a lot of activity throughout our city. This weekend alone, on Saturday night, we had a shootout that occurred on Santa Fe Drive that our LPRs and our surveillance cameras system allowed us to track down, identify the suspect vehicle. Suspect was hanging out of the window, so we got a good facial shot. But then by the end of the night before we went home, we actually had that vehicle, those weapons in custody, uh, by, through tracking them on our LPR system. So, you know, that, that's just one night. To include, we also had a pursuit when someone had a stolen car out of Lumberton. Ford stolen, and we came upon her, and they were able to seize and get guns, uh, from them. Uh, so, so that's just one night of business on a Saturday night. So, uh, we're still working to expand out to our westward, uh, side of the city with those LPRs. That's a total, how many cameras out there?
We're ten additional cameras that went up, um, that we. Other than cameras, where we can, um, be able to monitor that activity. And as Chief was saying, our, our city web cameras along with the license plate readers assisted.
That's key because that corridor between the western Fayetteville and Cook County, there's a lot of activity that occurs along Rake Road. Coming in Oak, let's see if they.
Mayor Proton, can I ask my question now since you?
Um, normally we need to hold because Mr. Hare will be first. Okay, we got you next. All right, then Jensen, go ahead, uh, Major.
And the last thing that I'll stop, talk about, of course, is our ShotSpotter, uh, program. So again, there were three one-square-mile areas that were identified, and that was based upon historical, historical calls for service for shots fired and weapon-related incidents. And the way that those areas were identified, it just happened to be each of the three patrol districts throughout the city. Um, ShotSpotter, they, of course, they started working on identifying locations to install the sensors. And as of today, they've secured majority of the missions to businesses and providers where they'll install some of those, of course, on a utility call. As the, those installations will occur, uh, ShotSpotter will be on site to conduct training with FPD personnel. And once that training has occurred and our policy has been, platform will be allowed to improve a dashboard that's similar to Durham PD on our website.
Uh, Chief, can we go ahead and I do have three that have questions before you go to your next section, please, sir? Uh, Councilmember Hare?
Uh, thanks, um, Mayor Proton, Chief, and Major. Yeah, yeah, I, I know.
Major Joyce.
I knew that, I know that we were in the identification stage of locating, you know, for where the sensors are gonna go. And I know that this, this, uh, effort with, around our diocese didn't move as what, what, you know, it had some suggestions about it, but I've heard very good support back from my fellow colleagues in Durham, how they are supporting and the returns that they're getting. We even had those conversations in Washington. And I also spoke to a colleague of mine in Goldsboro. And then the following day, it was on the news of the things that, positive response that they've gotten from SpotShotter. So my question is, I know that it's data-driven on where our sensors will be. Is that something that will change? If data changes, nine-one-one comes in or however, however you get that information, the, will those sensors in those zones change periodically?
So right now, the way it's set up is those geographical areas that have been identified. They went in and they set those sensors up. Any change of that area would probably, that's, have to come at an additional cost because they would have to reassess, go out, identify areas, put up all over again. Right now, the areas that they're in were actually chosen based on historical data that shows that even throughout the years, we used three years of data to, to narrow this down. But even if we went back ten years, historically, those, those same areas are affected. So, we tried to find the, the areas that we had those established patterns of trends that would be most cost-effective for us to put in those areas based on that data. But no, to answer your question short, no, it's not a system that I can take down and put back up. It's sort of set in place.
Okay, so you're not only doing present, but you're using historical data?
Yes.
Okay. Now, whenever we get to the part to where we, it's, it's ready, it's, it's to be signed off, and, and the platform goes live, are we able, will we be able to share that information with our constituents?
Yes, so we have.
Sensors would be, because I get that kind of conversation.
So they won't tell them exactly where the sensors are, but we'll have live data on our dashboard that, that indicates what activity is being reported, been reported. You know, if there, there was five shots, and we'll say there were five shots detected on this date, and had a police response of this.
But we won't, you won't give us the lo, I, I don't mean the specific location of the sensor.
We will tell you the, the geographical.
Yes, okay.
We have it mapped out and ready to go. That's a part of our rollout program. I know we're working.
I receive that kind of, yeah, I receive those kind of.
How we roll that information out.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Hare, Councilmember Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor Proton. Major Joyce, I have two questions. One is about the cameras and how individuals can register their cameras. But outside of some of the communities in my district, I already gave them chief's point of contact, uh, list. How do you go about those communities who have outside cameras, just like the LPRs, that you can easily access if you had a POC? And how do they register their cameras?
And they would be able to go to that site at connectfayetteville.org. And, and we worked, uh, with MarCom on pushing that, that initial rollout to, to the community. And again, you know, that's on our website, it's on our Facebook page. So we can continue to push that out as we build that program. So everyone knows you can go there and register your camera.
So let, let me make it clear. So the camera is located at the front entrance of the community. So they would have to register using their address for the camera that's at the front entrance of the community.
So, let me ask that one. So if there's a homeowners association that, that, let's say they have that camera at the front. The homeowners association could register that with us. That one that would be eligible to actually put a core on if they wanted to share information with us. We're not asking cores to be put on any private residences. It's, it's, it's the public access cameras that we're looking for for that core. So there's two separate programs. So if it was an HOA as a company or entity, they could come and actually ask for that.
Just be where, wherever their, their receiver is and then put that.
My second question is, I don't know where I was listening to it, but I know there's another community in North Carolina Police Department that asks for fifty more LPRs. I don't know what the cost would be, but from the success stories that Chief just mentioned, and you said we already have ten additional more. How many more do the city need? And what would be the cost? And is it feasible, City Manager, to have it in our budget to keep our community safe?
So we actually did a presentation at the end of twenty-twenty-two with what, what, what it would look like for the additional cameras that should get the coverage, where we'd be able to have that perimeter around the city.
That number?
It's, it's a big number. I'd have to go back and relook at those figures, and I'm sure, twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three. Because I know just the ten extra, that there was a significant price increase of those. So, but, uh.
So how much was the ten?
Look at a LPR with installation power. You're talking about fifteen thousand dollars per LPR.
So you're talking about a hundred fifty?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Councilmember Thompson, those were you two. Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Jensen?
So, thank you, Mayor Proton. I think Councilmember Thompson answered my question because what I was gonna ask is the license plate readers, um, for a business to buy them and, you know, to put it in their parking lot. So, in one of my parking lots, I got a lot going on, a lot going on. And it feeds into other businesses at nighttime, trying to figure out how to get everybody out of the parking lot. So I guess my question is answered. It's bill will be about fifteen thousand dollars if a private sector wanted to put one.
That, you would actually come off cheaper because we have to do installation costs on poles, we have to get permits and things like that. It's actually slightly cheaper for a, a, a personal business to have one attached. It's, you don't have to pay for all those extra things that the city has to pay for, have to put up. Like we have to run power, we have to get a contractor to come out and put those things up.
So, with that being said, I would be very interested, um, to know what that would cost because I, I mean, if you're saying it can be anywhere from five thousand to eight thousand dollars, I can see a business saying, I think I might wanna do this. And if alls it is, is attaching it to the poles, it, is it possible?
Yes, but, but they would have to research that and reach out because we can't recommend people to do those instantly.
Well, I, I, I understand that. No, I fully understand that. But what I'm saying is if we put it out there as a program, and I'm not asking the city to pay for it, I'm not asking for that. I'm just saying that there might be people that, or, or companies that believe that it might be beneficial to them. And I might be completely off base, I'm just throwing at the wall to see what would stick, but I think it might be a good toolbox.
There are, there are quite a few actual businesses out there. I know a lot of, uh, sheeps, they have their, in their parking lots as people come in and through their drive-throughs. So there are.
So do they do that personally?
That personally.
Okay, so I, I would, I think we need to research that for other businesses here in Fayetteville.
A lot of your new car washes use that same technology as well.
But the dress store would never think of that.
Well, it also depends on the type of, of security you're after. So sheeps, they have nothing but cars that roll through all day long, car wash all day long. For you, when we've talked about it, you've got stuff that happens at night, away from sight where you've got low light conditions. So y'all might would recommend your business watch where you actually go out and, they may recommend the camera, but they may also recommend a different.
I have all that.
I know you do. Just don't want you to run this.
So depending on the video that you are able, if, if there is a situation where there's a tag, that's something you can run through LPR now.
Uh, Chief, we have two more that are coming at you. Uh, Councilmember Benevente?
Could you go back one side, slide to the LPR cameras? Whether it's at the next quarterly, I need some more, a, a better understanding of that seven hundred felony and misdemeanor offenses statistic. Um, how many are straight-up felonies? Because you guys were looking for somebody that you already know is, um, doing, you know, the drive-by. Um, you know, where, how many were misdemeanors that led to felonies after you found them and searched them and, and, and found something? Um, the reason I, I'm interested in that data, um, is I wanna make sure that, you know, we're using this technology for serious crimes. Um, and we're not using it as just pretext to look for, you know, folks, uh, that may have, um, a broken taillight. And I'm not saying that's what you guys are doing. Um, I just want to see, um, the, the trends in what those seven hundred felony misdemeanors and felonies are. So, and you can speak to it, please.
Let you know, uh, there, there's certain criteria to be entered into that, uh, LPR system. We don't just sit there and say, hey, I'm, I wanna see what this car does. No, we're not doing the Big Brother approach of has to be a crime associated to that. Typically, what we see is we'll put in the stolen, uh, look for anything stolen that has a DCI hit on it. You can alert on those. Okay? If we have a murder suspect and we're looking for a white vehicle, maybe put in, look for a white four-door sedan, go through those at a certain time when we know that a particular crime occurred. There's nothing that's being hunted on. We get alerts from the system based on the, the, the metrics that we put into it. That makes sense. Okay? A lot of these misdemeanors that come out of there, okay? I stopped somebody, they're in a car. I got a bag of marijuana, I have a concealed carry handgun, concealed handgun in there with me as well. You catch those misdemeanor charges in association with being in possession of that stolen car. But we'll actually do the breakdown of how many specific misdemeanors, uh, how many weapons and how many felonies were associated with it.
And like I said, it's, it's kind of a, that you, I think you already get the point of my question. It's the chicken egg situation here, you know? You stop someone for the crazy felony, that makes sense. And then the taktan misdemeanors versus the, the inverse of that, which I'd be, I'd be less, uh, of a fan of. And, and I think if you can show me that breakdown, um, just to include that as well, um.
Gotta be careful because I, you know, we can see, I can tell you how many entries we put in. Okay? I can't tell you about a specific entry.
No, that's fine.
Hey, but a lot of these, like I said, are, are, are begun by a PCI hit. And then that, you know, if this car's reported stolen, that, that tag is read, it automatically lets us know. Okay? We may not even been alerted to that car. A lot of, specifically, it'll tell us, hey, you just had a stolen motor vehicle run through the inter, go through the intersection, a Sky Bowl mortgage. And as that alert comes out, officers in that area of Sky Bowl mortgage now know to look for a white four-door sedan with this license plate on it. So, again, it's not everything that we input into the system. We get a lot of feedback from the system based on things that are entered into DCI. The one that was stolen this weekend out of Lumberton, Fayetteville had no entries into that. Lumberton entered in DCI, and when we hit it, when, when it came through one of our LPRs, that's how we were notified to, to, to see that car.
All right, we used LPRs in the instance that we stopped, uh, an individual who ended up being a mistaken identity, uh, and holding them in, in questioning. That, but how we found that vehicle was through LPRs. Is that correct?
As far as the specific case, I can't discuss the specific case on that.
Okay. Well, my, I guess my, the larger point is that if, if seven hundred out of seven hundred are all, you know, perfect felonies, then, then great. I, I just wanna see the, the breakdown of that. And then could you see the, uh, the next slide? The, um, I'm sorry, um, back to the ShotSpotter. Uh, did you explain to Council the, uh, reason for the Sound Thinking now being up there?
So, that is a, ShotSpotter is a subsidiary of Sound Thinking.
As of?
They have, they have multiple platforms that are under Sound Thinking. ShotSpotter happens to be one of those platforms. That name change occurred within, within the last thirty days.
Um, and then what sort of checks do you have, um, currently on, or do you plan to put on? My biggest concern is that ShotSpotter came in and said that in other cities, bigger cities, people don't call nine-one-one when they hear shots. They use that sort of general, um, commentary. I don't know if that's true here. I wanna find out if it's true here. Are you guys gonna be counterweighing ShotSpotter calls or ShotSpotter alerts versus nine-one-one calls of shots fired and making sure that we're actually spending money on something that's telling us information that we otherwise wouldn't have?
Yes, we go, uh, we track, I can pull, track from our system how many, uh, shots fired calls we've had. And that's something we can do a year-to-year comparison that on to show whether there's an increase, decrease, or how ShotSpotter is affecting those.
You guys are, but you guys are chart-tracking all that?
That, as we develop that dashboard, yes, we can, we can track.
And then City Manager Hewitt?
Last question, Council.
This is it, yes, sir. Uh, City Manager Hewitt, you guys, um, got direction from City Council to look at those three one-mile radius, um, and to find out some characteristics about them to see if we can provide some additional resources, uh, other than just the microphones. Um, is that something that's gonna be implemented in conjunction with this? Or what sort of timeline do we have with those two projects?
We have, uh, we've done the analysis with Chris Colley and his group, and we have some recommendations, which we'll bring back to you in a month or two, on where we can use existing programs to support those areas. But we've been looking at the demographic characteristics of those areas and what we think would be our recommended programs would be in those areas. So we're working through that. We'll have it for you probably in the next couple of months.
Will that be in time for this deployment?
I'm not exactly sure when they're gonna flip it on, but, um, if that's the desire of the Council, I'm sure we can be.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Benevente, Councilmember Ingram?
Thank you. I'd first like to, uh, start by just, um, just saying thank you for the, the, the camera program. Um, and the way I, I explain it to my residents in the community watches is, um, I use a personal experience, which is, um, Fourth of July weekend, there was a shootout that happened in an intersection where my dad's house was. And when the police officers got there, we said, hey, we have cameras. Here's the USB, we loaded everything up. And so now that we have this database that'll be able to support you all going to residents and saying, hey, are you comfortable? You know, we, we see the sensor, um. Uh, from the community, the cons- constituents that I've talked to, that has been favorable, of course, they had questions about. If you would be able to see the information on cameras, and I had to let them know, no, it's whatever you want to share. Um, I do want to ask some questions, I already know the answer, unless something has changed. Um, when we started this, the conversation on ShotSpotter, I um, I was for it. And then the concerns started to rise, and then I said, well, I think we need to hold up. Um, additionally, I had started to talk to police officers um just all around. And asked them about, you know, what was most effective, and what I was told was that the LPRs were more effective. And especially with the ShotSpotter was in, it was probably the, the most safer route to go in terms of citizen rights. And so in that conversation, I said, instead of us moving forward, we might as well just put more LPRs out there. And so I think I heard that it would be about the roundabout same cost of what we're doing. For ShotSpotter, a trial run of ShotSpotter to get LPR, so do we know if we can? And I think I already know the answer because of what I was told last week, but are we able to say, hey, we don't, we don't necessarily. Want to move forward with ShotSpotters if we know that our data is saying that we are, we are, we are.
City Manager, can you answer her question?
I was still.
Well, there was a question in there.
Yeah, I did, yeah, but I'm talking still, thank you. Um, if we know that we are addressing co- crime, we have the stats to back it up. Versus us doing a trial run for the same amount of money, what we know we're getting stats, that just makes more sense to me.
Hey, Andrew, um, we have a, we contracted ShotSpotter, they have begun um their work. Um, and uh, I'm sure they have a date of deployment inside. This was contemplated by councils being a one-year contract, and uh we are uh probably uh very close to initiating this. As the chief indicated, so I would say that um switching gears at this time. Would be something that I would not really recommend, and I don't know that you'd be able to do so without incurring penalty.
All right, thank you, uh Chief, will you go forward with mental health training slide, please? And then council will go, if you have questions about anything for, we can entertain those, Chief?
So as we talk about uh trainings that the police department has, that, that, and how we respond to that. Uh, I wanted to uh start by saying, in just this month, uh, April twenty twenty-three, FPD hosted uh. A course of CIT course, we trained over twenty-eight officers from our Southeast region, ten of those specifically being Fayetteville police officers. Uh, CIT program stands for the Crisis Intervention Training, and it's what we're trying to incorporate across uh the entire department. Apparently have our, our mental health liaison uh is a CIT trainer, and we're actually implementing these classes so that. Uh, without disrupting the patrol operations, get everybody up to, up to, trained up on CIT. Addition that, in twenty twenty-two, the entire department went through autism awareness, uh, this, this training was an online training. Wa- walked officers through what to expect when encountering someone with autism, how to tell where they're at on a spectrum. And gave uh recommendations on how to deal with those individuals without triggering an unwanted response. So we completed that, uh, department-wide. Fourth quarter twenty twenty-two, the entire department completed our mental health first aid training. This is, again, it's another training where, you know, how would we initially respond, how do we evaluate and deal with persons that are in mental crisis? Uh, this is skills-based training course that teaches participants uh about mental health, substance abuse issues. Finally, uh, the training that we're trying to implement citywide uh throughout the department, ICAT, stands for Integrating Medification Assessment Tactics. It's put on, it's sponsored and put on through PERF, the Police Executive Research Forum. Uh, this is sort of a de-escalation technique, it teaches us how to use those tactics of not to get too close, how to utilize cover. How to effectively communicate and get the person to uh de-escalate or effectively respond to the commands of the officer before attempting to go handle. We also have to train the trainers uh within our department, this is another program that we're trying to integrate throughout the department. We'll have it taken in phases as not to disrupt the day-to-day operations with everybody off the road to give these trainings uh up to date. Uh, we're trying to also integrate it as our academies come out, so the brand-new officers are equipped with these skills and these trainings as soon as they hit the road, so. Those are the trainings that we've currently completed and are working on uh for twenty twenty-three. In addition to that, we want to talk about our community assistance, spots, engagement, and stabilization. CARES is an acronym, as we uh implemented our homeless liaison, our, our mental health liaison. Uh, we were, what, what was the purpose and goal of those actual units? Uh, the goal of the CARES unit is to help the most vulnerable uh in our community, to connect the resources established in long-term stability in the Fayetteville area. To improve safety, health, wellness of individuals, their loved ones within the community. That's a long statement of saying, hey, we need to know, we knew that there needed to be someone, a liaison out there, that was able to deal with the homeless community. Be able to connect them with the resources that were out there. We needed someone that, that could bridge that gap, that mental health piece between the police department and the service providers out there in our community. So, you know, they help track those calls for service force, they help uh uh prevent us from having to go out to a second call for service, we need to call them out. And they're able to contact the family, get them the help they need, or get them back on their medications. Uh, this is the unit that, we, we took several of the elements that we have throughout the department and, and said, how, how do they all work together? And, and as we add into our homeless officer that we used to, uh, that we have. Uh, they, they all provide some same or similar services, so we want to create a unit that they can all be housed in, so they have the uh working knowledge of what each other were doing on a day-to-day basis.
All right, thank you, sir. Um, questions, uh, Councilmember Benevente, round one.
I don't know if you can zoom in on that graph at all, um, but I just wanted to direct to the bullet point, Fayetteville CARES presents mental health model of Fayetteville City Council. Uh, if I can recall correctly, um, who is the, the, the chairperson, not the chairperson, but the director of that department? Not Ms. Bragg, not Ms. Marcus, but who's in charge of them?
Oh, Deanna Husk.
I believe Ms. Husk, and, and at the time, Chief Hawkins presented um on that in, in November of twenty twenty-two. Is that what that bullet point is, is referencing Fayetteville CARES presents mental health model to Fayetteville City Council?
Actually, this was starting under Chief Hawkins, uh, private.
And, and this may be a question for staff, but at, at that presentation that's bulleted in this very specific um item. A motion, a consensus motion was made at the time, and I just want to read it verbatim from the minutes so that we get it right, and I want to know why. If you look at the other bullet points, it looks like the police department went to Raleigh, they went to um a few other locations. But the recommendation for, or the consensus of this, of the council was specifically. Um, to receive the report um and direct staff to identify funds for a Durham Heart program-type model. Why wasn't that where, where they, uh, this, the, this, this tree map ended up going? Why didn't they end up looking at any Durham Heart model stuff like we directed?
I think that we have looked at, um, what this does, uh, it takes us, this is a running narrative from two thousand and two, and it ends in April.
I don't know anything about Durham in any of those little subsections.
We, of course, have had those conversations, I know that numbers of this body, I've also talked with people in Durham, I've talked with folks in Greensboro. Um, specifically, and, and this is also something that you're going to see coming forward with the um assistant to the city manager as well, of trying to consolidate all of these underneath. But specifically, um, I want to make sure I'm answering your question, you're asking, where is the funding model for us to implement the Durham model?
Where, where is the action, the six months um ago, we asked for as it related to that very first bullet point on the right-hand side? What are the results of the six months of research that the staff has supposedly done on that topic?
Please, I mean, what, what, I've, I'm not sure I understand, and I'm not being obtuse.
I understand, i- in November, we directed staff to identify funds for a Durham Heart program-type model as a response to that bullet point, where is that in this presentation?
So, and, and I know we've examined the, the Durham Heart model and the different prototypes that they have up and running. Uh, so as we look to those things, they're, they're the middle of, uh.
One of the ways to look at it is this, the Durham model has somewhat for homelessness, we have three. Um, the Durham model talks about co-responder models, um, we are going to be coming back to you guys about the paramedic response from the community paramedics. Talks about having um, uh, what were some of the other ones?
Crisis call diversion.
Crisis call diversion.
Mental health clinician in the nine-one-one call center.
We, um, all of our folks at CIT Y are certified, um, we don't have um. Um, identified, I don't think right now, someone who is dedicated call taker, who's a clinician, that's not something that we have identified.
Don't have that one, okay.
That, that would be sort of included in that community paramedic program, they do have the LCSW working for them, and those calls would be diverted to them to actually come.
So what would that look like, they would call nine-one-one, there'd be a crisis, and we would hook them over to talk to the clinician on the phone, or?
So, and I don't want to speak on that program because that, that's where into the Cape Girardeau Valley, uh, but, but yes, the way the community paramedic would work is that if there was no, no emergency attached to that nine-one-one. Wasn't someone with a gun being threatened or actually being assaulted, it would be a situation where that community paramedic could respond to that as opposed to a police officer. And they have that mental license, but the social worker that would be able to advise uh assistants as needed, make those recommendations of where they need to go. What, what op- opportunities were out there for them at that time.
And again, I just have to reiterate, uh, City Manager Hewitt, my biggest concern is that we gave very specific direction in November, and it's been six months since then. And is this supposedly the culmination of that direction?
No, this is um, uh, probably an update, we still owe you more, um, coming back, um, and um, the situation. Has, 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 has evolved since we, we talked to you guys. Um, um, we heard tonight, and not to belittle the interest from, about the Durham Hearts model. But Mayor Pro Tim talked about the fact that Fort Bragg is looking for mental health clinicians. Um, that the hospital and the, uh, and the paramedics have stepped in a different way. Uh, we've had the situation where we're bringing in the A two, but specifically, we, if we owe you information from that, and it sounds like we do, we'll go back and get that specific information. But um, uh. I believe that what we have provided is going to be responsive, but just not be responsive in the same way. And the same, it will be responsive, but it won't be responsive peacefully, but we will go back and get that specific information about those two.
Yeah, I mean, because Ms. Husk, like you said, has supposedly initiated this entire, you know, sequence of events, and it seems like the staff. Or the police department went in the direction that they felt most comfortable with, and not exactly what the council directed them to do. And that's what I'm incredibly uncomfortable with, because it's been six months, um, and we, and we have no response on that work that we asked for. And then we get this product, which is nothing like what we asked for.
Well, I want to, want to gently nudge on that. Um, the stuff with Durham, um, some of their, it's not citywide, and it's also not at the moment, um. They have, um, they have, since you, you and I shared the, the RTI video where they talked about the Durham Hearts model. Um, and so we're still in our infancy a little bit, but we will definitely go back and retool and make sure we get you all the answers to that. Um, but I do believe that the work that is on the screen and um, and the conversations we've had, the staff has tried to be responsive to that. It may not just be that we have all information for you.
When can we expect that?
Um, hope to get it to you, we hope that we would have met the map tonight, uh, but if not, we will retool, we will try to get it to you next week or two.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Benevente, Councilmember Ingram.
I just want to reiterate, make sure that I heard what I heard, we have not received the information that was requested six months ago on the Durham Hearts model.
Well, and that's what I wanted.
About, about, I guess, I guess looking at, because it was kind of like looking at us. Looking at setting up some type of co-response off of Durham Hearts, I just want to make sure we have not gotten that information.
No, you, no, you haven't, but I want, I want to go back and, and be clear, I don't, I, I'm, I'm, I'm missing something on a slight element. And I'll go back and I'll review the minutes and, and reflect on this meeting as well. What they have in Durham is, let's say, is, is four elements. What we're telling y'all is that we um have researched and are reporting back on those four elements, but they may be done in a different way. So, um, but the interest that I'm hearing, and again, reflecting on what you're saying, we were committed to six months ago. Um, is that we needed to bring it back to you in the same form, bottle. Bucket that they have in Durham, and then say, instead of that, we're proposing this, but so that you had both of them lined up.
Well, well, it was the mayor's request, and what I remember in his request was something that'll work for Fayetteville. Based off of Durham Hearts and co-response model, that's what I remember. Something that works for Fayetteville based off of X, Y, and Z, thank you.
And I can say this to Mayor Pro Tim, but I can just make this.
Yes, sir.
We can come back and we can give you just those two things, we can give you the, the version that we're proposing, uh, not proposing, that we're reporting on. And we can also give it to you exactly what it would look like if we were to take the Durham model, position for position, area for area. And, and overlay that here, um.
Yeah.
All right, um, thank you, Councilmember Ingram, and Councilmember Honduras.
Yeah, to uh Councilmember Ingram's point, Councilmember Benevente's point, and Mr. Mayor's not here, I think that was his Councilmember request, and also, to your point. So my recollection of that was to come back with something um that may or may not be similar to Durham, but, but specific for Fayetteville, so I'm thinking, you know. It doesn't have to be a carbon copy of Durham, so I don't know, uh, hmm, doesn't seem like it's that much of a disconnect for me with that.
But we will get to, we will, we will give it to you.
And the costs.
But, well, we'll give it to you and, and, and lay it completely out, um, the, um, we'll be happy to do that, I'm sorry we don't have that in that regard for you tonight. Um, we, like every other community, the reason that Durham, Greensboro, and Fayetteville are looking at this, and Raleigh as well and others. Is because there's a gap in the community and some of those resources that, that were exacerbated by the pandemic, exacerbated by the closing of mental health hospitals, shrinking. And it's, and it's actually going to even be exacerbated now with the addition of Medicare for all, because now you're going to have folks who have access to, uh, to insurance. But there's no providers, so the folks out here who have providers, um, now you're going to have ten or fifteen other people trying to get in to see the same. Limited number of clinicians, doctors, pharmacists, which is a good thing for everybody, but it's going to be, uh, it's going to be more pronounced trying to find someone.
All right.
To close this out, I'd love, I'd love to hear what, no, I'm just closing out the same topic, I'd love to hear what the mayor's uh idea is on this. But to uh the manager's point, the different providers, as we get presentations at uh Mental Health and Homelessness Committee. Each county and each city has its own provider, so the models aren't going to be carbon copies of each other, it's going to have to be one tainted made for Fayetteville. So Fayetteville's won't look like Greensboro's or Durham's or Raleigh's, so.
All right, thank you, um, the Medicare for All did not pass, it's Medicaid expansion.
Okay.
Um, so hopefully Medicare for All is way out in the future. Political comment.
Yeah.
All right, uh, thank you, Chief, thank you, Major, you know, Major, that pulls fertilizer from the top of your head.
I just need to go back up top.
Voting Bill passed.
I think you got it.
All right, uh, do we want to take a five-minute break or just slug it through?
We, we have.
All right, all right, Councilmember. All right, uh, uh, I believe Assistant City Manager Yates is on deck, unless it's nobody but Yates, no, anyone but Yates, City Manager?
Yes, Jeff. Um, I thank you all for coming here, of course, I'm tempered and, but. We've been working with. He is cold in here.
I'm hot.
I can tell.
All right, Assistant City Manager, rock on.
Thank you for the time, Jeff Yates, Assistant City Manager, I think it was pointed out to me last time that the folks at home can't see us, so. Um, I just wanted to introduce myself. So, um, I just wanted to introduce myself. So now we're going to talk about operating capital budget development. Uh, as you know, we've had some, uh, city council groups coming over this. So this is not the first time you're seeing it, but the first time, um, we are providing to the public information. So now we're going to talk about the parking lot, which is a follow-up from our last meeting. We want to talk about the general fund fund balance, the ARPA funding review, the Parks and Recreation Bond Financial Plan. Uh, and we'll talk about that in a little more detail. We want to look at the general obligation bond funding plan. Um, and really, this is different than what we looked at. We need to take a break.
Let's take a five-minute break.
I moved, recessed for five minutes, everybody is gone.
Warm any longer, the boss.
Everybody got to that room.
I said yes, just for reference. You let the minutes reflect, and I did say yes, and I stayed in my seat. Then he lost it, then I lost it, yeah.
Mayor Protem, we're back.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, I'll pick up from where I was at. Uh, we're going to talk about the general obligation bond funding plan, what that looks like given the market changes, and, uh, the difference between some of the things we talked about last week and this this week. Um, and our last session is we started looking at the possible impacts of revow based on the discussion uh, with you as the council, as we've been listening. We also have some revisions in addition to the parking lot, if there's any that you'd like to add, and then we have some calendar revisions. So let's talk about the parking lot real quick. These are the items, if you remember, that we did and wrote up here on the board in our last meeting. Um, the ones that are kind of bolded, we'll come back to you when we start to look at the the general fund model. Okay, we're working diligently to try to put together, um, a general fund model. This will include add-of-along rate analysis, which was bait or which is, um, partly to include that revow assumption, some of the revenue and expenditure options, some of the department requests for funding, the compensation items. And we're also looking at the vacancies. Uh, but when we talk about compensation, we're talking about more than just pay. We're talking about other forms of compensation, including 401 K, um, other kind of employment incentives. If you remember back to the discussion around that, it was largely, uh, it's, the game is shifting right now toward retention. Um, we used to talk a lot about recruitment, but as we're seeing statistically, we're seeing also a lot of movement away from our ranks. So, um, focusing hard on the retention, looking at why people are leaving. We do retention, or we do exit surveys, and we get some feedback that way. Talking about stormwater rate, uh, and rate structure, uh, history of tax rates and fees, and a couple of other items. So this is just our, these are the items we're working off of to try to bring back to you. We expect this to grow and shrink as we work through this process. So let's get into the year end. We have our unaudited fiscal year-end numbers for June thirty, twenty twenty-two. We have not issued our audit yet. And this is, the reason why we have not is first, uh, we had system issues. And then when we were ready, the auditor, our external auditor, had some staffing challenges and some challenges with their firm. We anticipate about mid-June to bring back to you the final financial statements. But we have been in contact with both the L G C and our auditor on a pretty much, uh, bi-weekly basis, if not daily, through our finance staff. We have not heard any concerns at this point. We feel like the information was good information. Our processes are good, it's just a matter of timing. Uh, and we're not the only city that's having these issues, particularly with the new E R P system. But we do have unaudited numbers that are not going to materially change from, um, from where we're looking at today. Quick primer, if you remember, we have non-spendable, which is inventories and prepaid. So these are things that are not liquid or that we have purchased that have value. But you can't spend them, right? Can't necessarily go out and and trade them for, or use them to buy stuff. Restricted, and restricted for the purposes of the financial statement means any time that you have an external federal regulation, an external contract, an external obligation that the council can't change by policy or vote, such as debt and primarily federal statute or other kind of general statute, those funds are going to be restricted. Let me say stabilization by state statute, that refers to our encumbrances, contracts we've already lent, commitments we've already made from a contractual perspective, so treated like debt, not, um, not spendable cash. We have committed, which is by policy, so this is our L O S A funds, and then assigned. Basically, assigned means that you, as a council with six votes, can undo and change that around a little bit. That includes most of the time what you've appropriated for fund balance, what you've appropriated for council, or I'm sorry, for capital projects that's not encumbered, as well as for special purposes, and special purposes in this case, or, uh, the designations that you, as the council, adopted. So that brings us down to unassigned. Unassigned is essentially what it says, funding that is available for any lawful purpose. So I want to walk you through real quick the twenty twenty-two assigned fund balance breakdown. You have your subsequent years expenditures. So when you adopted the budget for twenty twenty-three, these are the things that you put in, about three point, almost four million dollars, three point, uh, nine seven, or different things, including, uh, the fifteen dollars an hour, some bond funding, capital plan funding and so forth. You had the council adopted, uh, designations. I can't tell you within that, three million dollars of that is for the reconstruction museum. Then we have the capital projects, um, capital, regular capital funding plans, some money for your bonds, your P R, uh, Parks and Recreation Bond, uh, funding plan, the stadium funding. And then in your unassigned, we start with thirty-three point, uh, almost thirty-three point seven four million. You take out your policy goal of twelve percent. We know we have other commitments the council has made that are not reflected in your fund balance calculation. An additional three point three million to the reconstruction museum, second tranche, the M O K Heart commitment of two million, and the White Voices commitment of four hundred and fifty thousand. That leaves us with five point three million, give or take, to be able to then bridge that gap we had talked about in the three years. Remember, back in our last conversation, we were trying to figure out how do we bridge the gap for three years? So we believe right now you have about five point three million dollars to help do that. We haven't gone back yet and finished our discussion around twenty-three. So when I talk about the general fund fund model, what we'll do then is take these starting results, okay? Essentially, your bank balance. Then we'll say, okay, in twenty-three, we expect to get this amount of revenue and this amount of expenditures. And what will that impact be here? So this number will change. This is almost a year stale now. And we will adjust that and bring that back to you as part of that strategy. But I wanted to show you this, and as you can see, we put the history in. And you can see over the last few years, all the benefits that you picked up, um, through ARPA and all those different capital projects and your fund balance building. And remember, the unassigned includes what would be your twelve percent policy, um, included in that.
All right, uh, thank you.
We need that sheet.
Yeah, before you leave that sheet, uh, Councilmember Hair.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Yates, the, the, on the breakdown, the thirty-five K or the neighborhood beautification program, is that the, uh, our entrance signs and things along that line? Because I see two things there, I see that, and I see the community, the community beautification program. Are those the two to go together? Because we were giving them, at least last year, I think we gave them seventy-five thousand. At that right there, it's just sixty-five. So did we decrease? If this is for the new, what are those two bullets?
Well, traditionally, as you, as you were saying, we, um, funded the signage stuff through Chris Collins, uh, community development programs, and that was, had to meet certain income requirements and stuff like that. But council also expanded that, I think we put, uh, with twenty-five or thirty-five thousand dollars in there. Uh, but I think that's, that's it. Um, then we may put some more money into, um, speech.
We got six, seventy-five thousand. You know, we had gone up. We started out at one number, then we went to the seventy-five, I can't remember what that first number is. So are you saying now that it's gone down to thirty-five?
I don't remember that we ever spent seventy-five thousand on signage. There may be other.
Not, I won't call it signage, but it was, yeah, that program, but that was a part of the program. Where's Chris, is he gone?
He's gone, sir. It was both funding sources that were close to the seventy-five.
These two here?
So the C D B G funding and the general fund funding. This is only speaking to the general fund funding.
Okay, so then.
So we still have the C D B G. Yes, sir.
And, uh, E D C, okay.
Yep, yes, sir, from our grants.
All right.
Yes, sir, because I want us to keep that, that was just.
So the next thing that we were asked to look at was the ARPA funding, and this is your ARPA funding structure as we speak today. There are two buckets in ARPA, essentially. There are the programs and projects which, um, are used directly through the ARPA and are eligible expenses. These include your housing trust, for instance, your community development, um, center and so forth. The way this chart works, we can't see because it's stuck here behind, but I'll show you here. So the approved budget, the unspent. And when we say unspent, that is literally available cash that's not encumbered. Now, we, there are things in this agreement that are in transit, that are getting ready to kick off, that although they aren't encumbered, we have a commitment to do. So we're working on that analysis, there's still work to be done on this, um, graph and on this table. Because, um, if you remember back, one of the questions you that you asked us is under this revenue replacement, which are things that are eligible that are coming out of our revenue replacement bucket, is which of these things were used to advance C I P projects? And a large chunk of these were former C I P projects. So we're still working through that analysis to bring back to you. But I wanted to show you your current, where you are with your ARPA projects, um, from the perspective of where that money is allocated. And you can see the summary, you have about forty, uh, point three million and about twenty-seven point eight is unspent. So that's just kind of where we are at this point, and we'll bring back additional analysis related to the C I P as we get that in and get that ready.
Question before you.
All right, hang on, uh, Councilmember Jensen, on this sheet, please. Um, Air and Thompson.
Um, thank you, Mayor Protem. So what I wanted to, if I'm reading this correctly and everything that you've said and explained it, um, what I can say is, I think that, um, staff, everybody has done a great job because you have just shown on this chart how we have used our one-time money and to be able to put more money back in to our C I P that, for our residents of Fayetteville. So that is very impressive right there. And, um, I read over it, but I'm really going to dig into it because that is very impressive. And thank y'all for your work.
Councilmember Thompson.
Mr. Yates, did we ever get an answer to my question in our small group session about the intersection improvements? Will we be able to take that money from the general obligation? Will we be able to take that money from the general obligation bond since we already have it allocated and move that over to the general fund?
I do not believe we have an answer yet on that.
Okay.
But we have captured the question and we will be sure we get an answer.
Certainly.
All right.
Our.
Is that here?
Yes, sir. During our ARPA discussions, uh, with council, and I pushed hard and I, I appreciated the support of two hundred and fifty thousand, uh, infrastructure along the Johnson Street corridor. Cause we don't have, not everything over there has, uh, uh, sewer. And, and I thought that funding came through the ARPA funding, but I don't see a line item for that unless it's named something else. And this, this was in our meeting, uh, well, we had it, all of us had that discussion. No, it was to, it was to put that infrastructure there. Well, it was funding put forward. Of course, it's not all of it that's there, you know, that will, uh, support it. But that was a specific amount. I said, well, look, guys, I think that's where we'd be doing the stickums on the wall. I said, well, look, let's start something because it's gonna be needed there eventually. Any, it's gonna be needed. Um, and so I don't see that on here.
Can I, can I add? So we, we have like similar something. So I have a similar situation on B, on Link Street.
Yeah, but before we, before we pull it together.
Right. No, what I'm wondering is if it's nestled under the same thing and we don't know what the name is. Cause I don't see it either, you know, ARPA funding went to.
This was a discussion for the budget preparation for the current fiscal year from last year. Is that correct? We talked about the fact that, um, uh, so.
Well, I don't remember speaking on it now, so I'll go along with last year.
It was last year. And, um, there is, um, from, from memory, we basically said there's some money that we, in a five-year plan or something like that, is opportunities come up or that we will be able to try to allocate or dedicate something, uh, from the, uh, GEO bond in that general direction.
But we voted on it too.
Voted on it.
Consensus or whatever, but some hands went up and it was a majority.
And I think that the question then, probably now as well, is what infrastructure and when? And some of it was if we are marketing that area, Johnson Street corridor for housing development, then you very well could have a housing developer who says, I need assistance taking sewer to the back of a lot.
Yes, sir. And that was, that, you were right. That, that discussion was about that because we also brought up, um, um, at that time, the construction, I think was still going on. We talked about Amazon and, and.
Right.
I two ninety-five, that, that connection and how this is desperate. So yes, sir. It was a discussion that was, I remember it and I did, I weighed the money, yeah.
Well, the, and, and the idea was is that, um, chicken or egg, we needed, um, chicken so that we could apply money to it. Um, and, um, so we're still trying to move those projects, um. And I wanted to, uh, we'll have to go back and talk to Chris Collins, cause I think we had actually talked about this being one of the nodes of where we would be looking at development as well.
Well, and I appreciate all of that. I'm with you. You know why I'm with you.
But the money did not come from ARPA.
Yeah, I, okay, well, I, okay.
Because it, it would have been.
I don't see it regardless of where the money came from. I thought it was an ARPA discussion.
It, it may have been ARPA discussion, but ARPA has to be expensed by a particular date and time for a particular purpose.
Now, I was just wondering if my, if my money for, for my community, our community was over there in that twenty-seven minute, million, eight hundred and six, three hundred and four hours. Maybe you hadn't taken it out yet.
It's not, it's not.
All right, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Engle.
Well, since, since you brought it up.
I still didn't get my answer.
Well, I'm not, I'm probably going right, yeah. So I know based off of email, um, what I just brought up about something off of B Street dueling with maybe drainage or whatnot. And I was told it, ARPA fund, we, we used ARPA funding last year to, to work on it. So what would that be on?
What would, which one?
I think it's on Link Street.
We will go back and we'll find out about the drainage improvement programs, which I think were really, um, uh, but they, I've seen those emails. And there's a difference in flooding and there's a differ, a difference in, um, just the magnitude of rain that we have where temporarily it, water backs up everywhere until the storm drains take care of it.
Right. I'm not asking about like what's going on. I'm asking about how that translates to be here if you're telling me is we used ARPA funding to address X, Y, and Z.
If there was a project that we use ARPA funding for, we can go back and we can pull that.
I think I'm sure.
And I wanted to clear that this forty million dollars is the ARPA dollars we received. There are additional state ARPA dollars. It gets confusing.
Okay.
Our state ARPA dollars that were, were enterprise funds.
Okay.
Not represented.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
And that very well could be where you wish to add as well, Mr. Yates.
I'll be looking for that in the next day or so.
All right, Mister Yates, proceed.
So I wanna come back to one thing that, um, the manager said that I wanna reiterate. There is a time limit to spend this funding, so, um, we, we will try to be as judicious as possible in ensuring that we spend it and it will be in time. Some of this project money is only a portion, for instance, uh, Blan, uh, what is that? Bladen Road Extension. That five hundred thousand doesn't fill the load, obviously. It's a portion of funding that's in the capital plan that's weaved together with other funding and possible grants and so forth. So this is one way to look at it. There's, if you turn it sideways and look at projects, there's also other funding that are in these projects. So we, we will definitely come back with some of that information. So let's talk about the, um, Parks and Recreation Bonds Financial Plan. And, um, this is your last GEO prior to the one that was adopted in the fall. We now know where we're at, that your last tranche of funds were issued in twenty twenty-two. So, uh, based on that, I want, just wanna walk you quick through the assumptions. We have our debt service based on the actual issuance. Our best assumption is about two percent. Right now, we're vesting that a little bit. Um, but as I believe was discussed earlier, all the bankers are telling me the exact same thing, that third quarter of, uh, this year, uh, third and fourth quarter will be kind of rough. Um, estimated average loan growth is about one and a half percent. There's about, uh, it's one point four two cents committed to Parks and Recreation projects. Assumes a fifteen percent revow in twenty twenty-six. This will become more important in the next slide, but I wanna talk about that a little bit more detail. Assumes operating support for the new facilities.
And you define what fifteen percent means in dollar amounts?
Right now, fifteen percent per penny is gonna, is gonna yield you about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars more per penny at that point.
Yes, it's ten million dollars?
Okay, fine. We can, and that's what I wanna talk about a little bit more. So, um, the, if, if it's okay, Councilman, I'd like to come back.
Yep, thank you.
Uh, assumes operating support for the facilities, particularly in the Parks and Rec Bond, you're opening new facilities and new sites. You have to maintain those. So, uh, what we wanted to show you was as that one forty-two, your debt service and debt service is issued with your first payment being the highest and over time, your payment gets lower, unlike your mortgage where you have a level payment at a time. As money is freed up in that funding, we are providing operating support to the Parks and Recreation, um, projects. So right now, we planned a hundred and fifty thousand dollar operating support to go there and then assumes a balanced floor of a million dollars. If you're following the assigned fund balance going across, when this hits billion, uh, one million dollars, it'd be kind of over here, then that is at the point where we've reached equilibrium. We maintain the million dollars, give or take, to ensure that the funds stay, stay solvent, pay your debt service, as well as to pay your operating costs. So all this to say, as you can see, this graphic goes down and when it hits that floor, it just kinda levels out. And then the amount of money going into the operations is just the difference between revenue, debt service and including your investment income over time. So that's kinda how you build a sustainable model for your, your debt program. This works because you started taking the one forty-two earlier than your debt service because you started taking it. We were to back that up several, several years ago, but didn't finish issuing all your debt until twenty twenty-two. We're still able to do your projects because you had cash, which is fine because we have full cash. But, um, that allowed you to do that. So what does that look like for the twenty twenty-two GEO bond financing? And this is a little different than what we've talked about before. Um, after hearing from your, hearing the discussion and kinda looking at it, I spent a lot of time with it and really kinda dug into what the impact that revow looks like, how we could mitigate and how we could look at timing and so forth. So this is the latest estimate, um, through today, although we did get some information from the county that I haven't been able to digest into the model yet. Concerning valuations and motor vehicle taxes. But as of our last run, this is what we're looking at. Same concept, debt service based on estimated issues. The interest rates we were using is five percent for GOs and six percent for taxable issuance. I will, we say taxable because your housing fund is unique and is not for, um, won't be allowed to be used like a, a tax exempt issue. So you'll issue taxable GOs, okay? And we can talk a little bit about that if you, if you have a question. But it basically means under IRS rules, the uses of them, uh, don't meet their, their guidance. Um, best assumption at two percent, average loan growth of one and a half, assumes a fifteen percent revow in twenty twenty-six. You can see going from here to here, there's a big jump. It's about a million one, which is the impact of that revow. The critical part that you have to remember about this process, about this analysis is that it assumes you maintain the tax rate. That you don't draw down your tax rate to revenue neutral. Because what you're doing is picking up all that growth, that fifteen percent growth and using it to offset tax rate in the future. If you were to go down to revenue neutral, this rate would necessarily have to go up at that time. Because you're gonna, once you issue that debt, you're kinda tied in and committed. Same thing as we saw before, there's going to be operating support. It doesn't hit this model until about twenty thirty-one, twenty thirty-two. Because that's when the model, the, the financial picture starts spinning off more revenue than debt service is costing at that point. As you can see, same issues that we have assumes a floor of one million. So you can see, we're taking it a little early. Cutting the head, what I would say, cut the peak off. And then you start to draw it down to a million dollars, just like we saw in the last model. So the high point is going to be in twenty twenty-five and then you start using what you gained in twenty twenty-four to offset rate in the future years. If you were not happy with that, or if you wanted to do something different, you always have a couple of alternatives. The alternatives are you can push pieces further out. Your GEO bonds last, your authorization lasts about eight years. So you could wait, for instance, on the housing money until you felt like you had a worthy project to do. You could, um, again, housing is the most flexible, or you could trim the program back, although the voters did adopt ninety-seven million dollars. So the good news is when we calculate for, for a revow, that we're gonna be right at just a little bit more than that four cents that was discussed during the process. Um, I will also say if revow comes in different, higher or lower.
Yeah, of course.
Then this may change. This is an assumption on rebound. Some things built on assumptions. You may issue lower, you may issue higher. So once we do all the issues, we will have to come back and we'll adjust this, but this is what our best information is telling us.
All right, very good.
Other questions?
You have worked on it since we last met, so thank you. Councilmember here, I'm glad I know what your question is.
Well, and, and thank you, um, I, I, I have to, but looking at what the residents voted on in Novem, um.
November.
November. As I said in my small business and, uh, uh, budget meetings that we sold, and that was very important, that we articulate to the citizens what they were gonna be facing when they go to vote, if they voted yea or nay. And if I remember correctly, I think we started out at a rate of three point five, there between three point five and four percent, not five, as I see here.
Oh, four point two five is on the screen, Councilmember here. That's where he adjusted.
Okay, oh, yeah, right, right, right. I'm looking, yes, sir. So what my question is, well, for one thing, I don't think that's being very fair.
What?
We, 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 um, we sold one, okay, so you say you adjusted it down to four point two five, right?
So you said the four?
Okay, well, I, I, I thought that's where we were at four, but I, I do like the adjustment. At least it's not all the way to the five percent. Now, so you can, uh, speak about that. And, and another thing that you brought up at one of the meetings, and now that we have the council as a whole, I think is, is good. Uh, you stated that if we did not move forward, if I'm saying it correctly, Mister Yates, please, as you did the last time, you know, correct me. Uh, with the ninety-seven million? And if that, if that was in a, in a holding pattern? Something along that line? How, what is the effect of that on the citizens? If it's not taken immediately?
So there's a. So I'm gonna, if I can jump on this too. Um, the, the commitments that, um, were expressed, um, during the small group, during the community meetings, which we had probably, how many, Jeff? Well, in, in conservative, we had, we literally would have them in every district, every library. Sometimes they had three a day. Um, um, people wanted to know how much is this going to cost? And we kinda generally told them what we thought. I would, for the members of council who were on, we did the Parks and Rec Bond. We first started off by saying that was gonna be one point three five cents. But as we moved along and the economy went along, we had to adjust that rate to one point four two cents. So if we were to come in and we were to say, for instance, council says we're going to adopt four cents, where, where that's what it's gonna be. In two or three years, if we have to adjust the rate, we have to, you literally have to adjust it. That's the whole thing about the GEO bond, is you're pledging your tax rate to repay this loan. This isn't one of the options where they can come in and they can repo half of the fire station. When you issue, when we issue the debt, whatever the markets look like, when we get ready to issue that second tranche, the third tranche, when we're in the middle of it, we're gonna have to pay it back. I'm not saying that if we were sitting here and the number was six or seven cents when we talked about three and a half or four, or whatever else, that we'd be in a different place. But Mister here, as usual, you got it. The, the point is either you, just like when you go to buy a car, they either tell you how much do you wanna spend a month? Or how much is the car gonna cost? And it's like, uh, uh, what you want your payments to be? That's what they start with. How much would you pay? I want my payments to be four fifty a month. And so, okay, but we're gonna extend that out till you got an eight-year loan. Oh, no, 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 I don't want a year loan. Well then, okay. The numbers, it's, it, it's like a squishy game. You gotta figure out where we wanna go. But if we're gonna say the number's gonna be four cents and it's never gonna ju, go above four cents, staff has, could come up with some options, but the squishy part of that arrangement is for the parts of the debt that Chris talked about, not to Chris, that Jeff talked about, about the housing, where we might be able to, uh, get money from elsewhere as the situations come up to help offset some of those costs. Um, but literally something would have to give somewhere. And, um, uh, and I don't wanna lose sight of what he said, what, what Jeff said. This assumes that we will not go revenue neutral and that we will have positive growth when it comes time for the revow. So the minutes need to reflect that. That's the direction that the council takes. In two years or three years, and we're here, if the growth is not what we thought it was gonna be, so it's less growth, you still may have to adjust your rate. If it is more growth, you may be able to downward adjust your rate potentially. But given all the other challenges we have, what you're projecting out now is that when we get ready to go through the next revow, we've gotta figure out a way to help recoup what we're gonna see is that sales tax money that we're, that, um, because of the sales tax agreement we've been sitting into, it's gonna change in three years out.
And when is that going to affect the rebound?
The, um, the, I think the reason.
FY twenty-six is what we're.
FY twenty-six. And we're preparing the budget now for which fiscal, fiscal year twenty-four.
Twenty-four, so.
Then is there a different, are there two revows? Is there a counter-revow and a city revow?
And it's the same revow.
Because I, 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 as I was saying, I, I was getting paperwork, so was that paperwork was getting us ready for twenty-six?
They're, they're getting ready.
The reevaluation will come out twenty-five, it'll go into effect by us.
Well, they do that, um, uh, quite often ask people to update their listings and stuff like that, um, yeah.
Okay.
I did wanna make sure that, that we, that was, that we marinate on that point. And like I said, you, you got it right. If it, if this number, if you want to pay no more than four fifty for the car, okay, you either get less car or you spread the payments out longer. Um, and that's not an option for us to stretch them out longer, but we would have to do less.
Thank you, City Manager. Assistant City Manager Yates, proceed.
So, um, so that's kinda where we are. We continue to work on this, but it's starting to settle out. Again, there's a lot of assumptions. Again, there's a lot of assumptions, as Doug pointed out, as the manager pointed out. There's a lot of assumptions that go into this at this point. And I will point out too, the longer you wait to do your hard construction projects, the less you'll be able to buy. So the longer we push out the public infrastructure, public safety projects, you're losing, every day you're losing capacity within that debt. That's why we would recommend if you're gonna do anything, and you wanted to shrink this in some version of it or delay it, housing again is the most valuable because it doesn't have a hard infrastructure project necessarily tied to it. So, um, but this is where we're at today, after listening to the conversation, the dialogue, uh, our last meeting, as well as our small group meetings. So back to the parking lot. Uh, this is where we're working on, a lot of those questions, I think, that we were just talking about with the rebound will come out when we start talking about the general fund model, and show you what we see as the five year future, and kind of how that impacts. Um, is, this is a good time, if you have something that you want us to look at that's not on here, this, you have additions. We'll also, at the time of the budget, uh, we'll take kind of that secondary parking lot, if you will, that'll say, okay, these are things that didn't quite make it in the budget, but we'll continue to look for those. But if you have additions, now's the time, I'll write them on the board, I think Jody and Kimberly are both taking notes, so we'll be sure we capture those.
We had questions or recommend, uh, Councilmember Ingram?
Yes, thank you, I brought it up within my small group meetings, and I let you all know that I would bring it up again. Um, there was a request, um, received by Cape Fear Regional Theater, um, for two, two point five million. Um, that would be five hundred thousand over the next, next five years. And so I did want that to be considered, um, especially with the great work that they are doing, and the due diligence and the process that they went through to ensure that they got their request in before this was even a, a issue before us. Um, so I did want to make sure that that got added for consideration, thank you.
All right, uh, City Manager, would you explain to the council, I don't know, I don't think we can commit another future council to a budget item, so you could kind of touch on that.
Yes, um, what we would, um, look to do for, um, a commitment like that would be to, um, put it in your CIP, you have a five year CIP, capital improvement project. Um, and conversations that Adam, uh, primarily has had with, um, folks at, um, CFRT, what they're looking for is, uh, a willingness of the council to say that you are going to fund something, and that you're hopefully funding them out. Uh, Councilmember Ingram, uh, has, is advocating, but she's mentioned that we funded sooner rather than later. And just given where we are with the commitments that we have, what I would love to do, and my plan is, is that we would put it in the CIP, which council adopts. And it's, it's not necessarily binding, but, uh, it would be a signal that the council is interested in funding this, and funding it potentially at a particular time. Uh, we ran into this with the, uh, and we'll change the slides and references too, saying, um, it is the Reconstruction History Center, not museum. Uh, but the, um, that was a little bit of a bone of contention for council members as well, we did not want it to be a static place where, um, it was just dead information, it's, uh, viral and stuff like that, so we'll just make that change. But, um, we ultimately had to come back and do an agreement with them to provide them with the money to actually nail that down and lock it in. Uh, the same as we are doing with, um, the contract we did with NoK, and also Black Voices as well.
Yep.
Um, and, um, if we were to do that, we would, um, I'm gonna teach y'all a little bit about contract law.
Well, you've already explained to us the squish game.
About the considerations, and, um, uh, so I don't know if anybody is studying, uh, was an attorney or a designer, but let me tell you what it takes to make a contract.
He went to law school too.
Would you like to, um, okay, yeah. Offer educated me very well on what it takes to make a contract. So, um, Councilmember Benavente.
Bargain for negotiation.
Don't report him to the boss.
But it was educational only, back to the napkin as a matter of fact. But to your point on Councilmember Ingram and others, um, and Mayor Pro Tim, um, it will be, um, in the recommended budget, uh, your consideration of funding for Cape Fear Regional Theater, I'm not sure yet when, um, it will, where we will slot it in. Uh, but council is always has the opportunity, when you adopt a CIP, to say, we don't want it in, or we want to accelerate it within reason. And then we're able to come back, they're also looking for money from the county, but again, what, uh, Adam heard from, uh, the director.
Mary.
Is Mary Kate, is that they are really, um, interested in you saying, yes, this is something we want to fund.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
I do have some storm water flooding, that's flooding some of my neighborhood.
Will you do that, Councilmember Ingram, or are you satisfied, you're not?
We could talk, but, um, so no, thank you, City Manager, and as I said before, um, they followed the process. And they, they, they did their due diligence with making sure they could gather consensus. And for the fall, for the, I just don't think that's necessarily, you know, it don't, it doesn't look good, they have not asked us for anything in twenty years, but, and they're also in terms of, uh, walkability, pedestrian safety, they are also solving an issue on our behalf with this project, thank you.
Just very quickly, I don't recall, Madam Clerk, if we actually had Cape Fear Regional Theater come and make a request of council. So I know that we have, uh, we've all been up, or have been invited to talk about their, their project, very exciting project. If y'all are, uh, if we can find time, would you be interested in us maybe asking them to come to a work session? And actually present fifteen, twenty minutes about their whole vision for the. Okay. We can do that. I move.
Hang on a sec, Councilmember Here, are you good? Or you said something about storm water?
Sir, I'm, I'm good, sir.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Benavente?
Uh, would that require a motion from, or consensus from us to get that?
No, if, if, unless there's some opposition to it, um, the, um, as, as Councilmember Ingram said, they have been working on this for several years, and it's at a state where they're ready to seek commitments. So, uh, but, um, just want to be mindful of how we treat one, we treat all, but I think that makes them a little bit different in that they have been working on the capital campaign and everything else at this time, now that they get used to funding.
All right, um, I'm.
Well, I still have a floor, Mayor Pro Tim, I was just gonna, uh, reiterate, um, briefly Ingram's request, because it's such an easy win, y'all, they've, they've, they've already fundraised so much that we're talking about a five yard line home, you know, we're just really close, just having a really great touchdown, um, on this item, and, and it would be huge. It would just be such an easy thing for us to brag about that we did, and we, it's, it's, it's an obvious yes. I think if we can find, uh, two and a half million this budget cycle, it would be ideal, um, because why not?
It's all right.
It's money.
Very good, uh, oh, it's just taxpayers' money.
But we'll get it back, I think, tenfold with the project that they're trying to propose.
Very good, Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim, so what I was gonna ask, and I'm like, just trying to think out of the box, because I do support, um, what they've done, and they have completely done it right, the whole works. The question that I have, two point five million dollars, I think it's gonna be a hard thing.
Over five years.
Over five years, yes, no, they, but for us just to give, but they're not asking for it for the first year, they kind of, this is what I'm kind of understanding, I might be wrong. But my question is, if, you know, I think what needs to be put in the CIP, is there any way, and this is for Attorney McDonald, can we do like an MOU with them? Saying that, or am I completely going out of the box? Just to make sure if a different council comes along, that it's, it's in, because when I came on council, that the multi-mobile center could have been taken apart like easy, if six votes would have said, no, we don't want to do it. So what we're trying to do is, we don't want that to happen, so I'm just trying to think of some way that we can kind of not.
Well, we did, and that went upside down?
What?
The history center, and that went upside down?
Yeah, so I was asking, can we do an MOU or something that were held by, um?
Well, that's the, the contract piece about the consideration, um, as it stands, um, we, they're asking us to, uh, create community benefit by participating in their capital campaign and this, and expansion. That's where Mayor Pro Tim said that a future council could say in three years, what's the consideration, in order, what are they giving me for my money? If they give, we can look back and say they promised to do X, Y, Z, that they're going to build me a parking lot, and, uh, for my contributions or something like that, and that, that I can use. What's the consideration, but, uh, we'll work. And, and the council, this council and past councils, y'all have been very consistent. The main thing has been, if it gets in the CIP, it literally always, and that was where we ran into trouble with Reconstruction History Center. Is that for a long time, we did not put it in the CIP. And it was, it was hung out there as to whether we could fund it or not. And Mr. Here, you remember those conversations about it wasn't in the CIP, and just a whole host of issues, but if it gets in the CIP, it, it largely gets done, but.
Did you want to make a consensus motion, uh, Councilmember Benavente, to either put the CIP or study if it could, more go into the budget?
I move that we.
Have staff.
Have staff incorporate a two point five million dollar earmark for CFRT in this budget cycle.
Third.
Wow.
Is that over five years? Oh, five, yes, okay, well, please take that.
Per the terms, per the terms that they've mentioned.
All right, uh, however, that can be structured legally. Yeah, or come back with recommendations, says to maybe one and a half million this year.
Well, I, I can, I can.
Their actual request was five hundred thousand over five years.
And, and I want to be clear with y'all, as I said, in some small groups as well, we will present y'all on the CIP, and then we'll adjust it. And I don't know what that's gonna look like yet, don't know what it's gonna look like. But we, uh, literally have projects which are underway and committed for, for which we may need additional money.
Fund it.
We'll bring out our red flags.
Fund it.
All right, so your consensus?
So, yeah, I, I just to reiterate for this, for the, uh, for the minutes, um, I move that we, um, vote in, uh, consensus on a two point five million, uh, allocation, five hundred thousand annually for five years, uh, to CFRT for their capital project.
Is there a second, Councilmember Ingram's question? And okay, we have discussion, Councilmember Here.
So is, I know how things can be in the CIP, so is there, is there a, a date, or is it just to go to the CIP?
Well, I would, I would, again.
Cause we have some projects that's there.
Well, I'm gonna try this again. What y'all are saying is, is that you want me to leapfrog this over Glenville Lake, which is not in the CIP. What you're telling me is that you want me to leapfrog this over pickleball courts, which are not in the CIP. You want me to leapfrog this over whatever we were talking about, a community center. And we have not presented y'all with the CIP yet, for y'all to see what those new projects are. And you can, this is general consensus, but what will come back will be what we can fit in, and it may or may not look like, I'm not saying it won't look like it. I think any guidance that y'all give us, but, um, just be very mindful that, um, the CIP every year does not, remember, we argued about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a truck wash? And we're not committing with, without a formal presentation to the entire board, at a public meeting, two and a half million dollars. So I just, as long as y'all are comfortable with that, um.
That's my motion. Okay, and, um, and, um, it's, sir, Councilmember Thompson?
I can support the CFRT, but I cannot support no leapfrog projects that's already in this pipeline. I believe that we should get them on the CIP, not for this year, but for next year, I cannot see how we can sit here and expand our budget, when we're trying to cut our budget.
Well, we can have that discussion once it's been properly fed through staff, and then you can say that.
We're directing staff to come back with their suggestions, and then the council will decide what we do.
Staff, we suggest next year.
That's right.
All right.
At, um, as I stated earlier, in my personal perspective, I don't think it's being leapfrogged over any, any, especially, especially Glenville Lake. I've, CFRT is not going to the newspaper on anybody. They are doing the work of this community, especially for our children. They've not asked us for anything, they don't ask us for anything, and they are trying to solve major issues that, that incorporate bringing this community together. If you've not gone to their shows, if you've not put your children in their programs, I, I would, I would, I would ask you to, to at least open, I'm not gonna say open your eyes, but look at what they are actually doing. And, and, and in my perspective, this is a nothing. We gave three point some million dollars to a history center that we all probably felt like was choking the life out of us.
So, Mayor Pro Tim, just to say this unclosing, I don't want to use the words leapfrog, but what I want to say is, you don't have the entire CIP in front of you. And, um, but the direction that y'all give, if there's consensus for the motion, is clear enough for staff and I to say this is of interest to the majority of you, and we will come back with a way to try to fit it in, and if some things move forward or not, we'll be able to show that to you, and then you can make a decision.
Very good, thank you. Um, I, those favor, I, one, two, three, four.
To bring it back, to bring it back, that's always the case.
Yeah.
Explain it, just tell me one more time, uh, Mayor Pro Tim.
We'll come back with some options as to ways that we could give them money over time.
I, I will support the options coming back to us, and I'll, yeah, I'll go that far, okay, this time.
Uh, unanimous, uh, Clerk McGill? I think I had the vote before I even had you.
It's okay, it's okay.
That's twice, we got what we wanted, we're out there.
All right, thank you, Mr. Yates just got a new calendar for us, right?
Right, so I just want to point out a couple of things real quick on this. Um, as we're working through system issues and having some meetings, we're expecting the recommended budget to come on or around your meeting on the twenty second. That may slide a little bit, just depends on if it's fluid at this point, with staff challenges and so forth. Um, we have an obligation to have it to year round June first, and then we need to adopt it by the end of fiscal year. Right now, we're slated to the nineteenth, um, again, that could change based on council direction and so forth. So I just wanted to kind of lay that out for you, um, and kind of give you an idea of when we're having certain components, and for a public to see, of course, every public meeting will be noticed, and then we will look through that.
All right, thank you very much, all right, uh, start the clock, uh, Clerk McGill for Councilmember Honduras, he wants to discuss PWC commissioner appointment process.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman, Mr.
We have a way to display clock for now.
I'll be as brief as possible. So my ask tonight is that we look at the PWC commissioner appointment process, maybe beginning at August one, instead of waiting till our normal time. Departments supported this quest, PWC and staff, uh, I guess clerk, whoever advertises the boards of commissions, uh, vacancies. Estimated staff time required, uh, again, the, the staff time it will take to market and advertise the vacancy. Receive the applications and, um, the maintenance to inform the committee, which council approved goals within the strategic plans, does this directly support responsive city government? Uh, supporting a diverse and viable economy, which is goal number two and goal number three, a senior investment today to know. Uh, I envision with this goal we'd accomplish, uh, is appointing the PWC commissioner vacancy, which the next one, I believe, will come up September thirty, twenty twenty three, in a timely manner. Uh, as we know, the last several PWC appointments, beyond the, uh, that, that expired outgoing commissioners term, the most recent one, I think, is five months, uh, before we could come to consensus. Uh, so by starting the process sooner, uh, hoping to, uh, have a, uh, PWC commissioner appointed, uh, in a more timely manner. Uh, if we do start this process, August one, uh, well, and I'm saying August one, I'd like to immediately start advertising, uh, the, the application process, receive those applications, and by August one, have the informant committee look at those applications, and, uh, bring it to us. Even if we're to appoint, uh, to get consensus and make the appointment prior to the September thirty, uh, expiration of, of the outgoing commissioners term, they could just be a. So with that, I will yield my time and answer any questions if there are any.
I think what we're looking for is what your consensus motion would be.
So instead of waiting, a lot of times with the boards of commissions, we appoint in the spring and the fall, and we do all the vacancy applications at the same time. Staff, you know, puts out a, advertises those vacancies coming up, instead of waiting for the fall tranche.
Or what, what's your suggestion, specific motion consensus?
To put the application out immediately, and then I don't know how long, is it a thirty, forty-five day, sixty day process for the application?
So, yes, we should have time, it's a month.
For a month, so if we put it out, if there's. For a month, so if we put it out, if there's motion, uh, for consensus tonight, we can immediately start advertising the, uh, vacation, the upcoming vacation or upcoming vacancy, uh, for thirty days, get, receive those applications, and then let the appointment committee vet those applications and bring it to us.
I think we need to know what the policy is, I can't recall what the policy is, if it's. Oh, uh, Policy Committee Chair Jensen, would you comment on what the policy says?
So what the policy reads is the city council shall make appointments twice a year in March and, and September. Replacements for an appointee who has resigned or has been removed present, that doesn't have anything to do with it. Okay, shall be made only as necessary, so nobody's been removed. The process to fill vacancy on city boards and commissions and the process to appoint a replacement for the, for an appointee has, who has resigned or has been removed, so this is all about removing. You don't have anything to do with it.
I ask, that's a general policy for all of the citizen advisory boards and commissions. And the P W C commission is not merely an advisory board, it, it's got statutory authority. They, they provide guardrails for P W C staff to do their day to day business, much like the city council provides.
All right, see, you have less than a minute, so can we do a motion that would, uh, invalidate our policy?
Well, I, I don't think it, I, well, I don't necessarily invalidate what he's saying, it's, I think he's saying the person will still be appointed in September. He's just trying to get the process started so that you have enough time to deliberate.
That was my question, just to make sure it's just to open up, to give a heads up.
All right.
So we can start the process sooner.
Sooner, yeah.
Yeah, all right, so what's your consensus motion, Councilmember Hondros?
To, to, to go ahead and, uh, direct staff to.
Open application.
Open application process for the P W C commissions.
All right.
For thirty days, once it closes, they can come and do their job.
What was the day again, that you're trying to open the application process?
As soon as staff can advertise another one tomorrow would be great for me, next week will be fine, so.
All right, uh, is there a second to the consensus?
I have a question.
I, I'm gonna come to you, is there a second, is that a second?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, all right, Councilmember, uh, Thompson.
Two questions. If you open it and close it in the next thirty days, how the ones that normally wants to apply in September know that it's open and closed? And two, if you're gonna move it up, don't you yet have to create now a different policy for P W C appointment? Or is this just what we're gonna do for one time, as council can change it again?
So we're gonna advertise, I think it's two separate issues, so we can advertise it the way we, the way we normally advertise it. And then to answer your second question, if we want to look at the procedure and the process for selecting a P W C commissioner, whether we take that to the, send that to the appointment committee or to the policy committee to look at how we appoint P W C commissioners specifically, maybe adding a, 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 uh, interview part to it, or however we want to do it, I think that's a separate one. But my ask for tonight is to just start the process from the beginning, have sooner.
All right, uh, City Manager, do you have a comment?
No, I, I, um, I think those are all, all valid points, um, and you could, uh, accomplish, um, it in a variety of ways, but, yeah. But I think you're, you're just trying to jumpstart the process, but the point that Councilman Thompson made was also interesting, whether you want to keep it, applications open until field or for sixty days, but.
My understanding is the applications, like for the report we just made, the ones that didn't, those applications are valid for a year, right? So there's two valid technically, so we would just open for thirty more days to get additional.
All right, um, I had a Councilmember, basically, then you, Councilmember Ben, yes, ma'am?
How many days does it now that we, um, thirty days? Six weeks.
I thought it was thirty days before.
Put out the notice for, um, for the spring, actually in January, and then we close it. The. So that we have the month to review, so that council can approve and do their votes by the end of March, April, or I'm sorry, the end of March, and then the appointment's going to affect April first.
All right, thank you.
Cause I, I, cause I was gonna say, I, I support starting early, but I think this is like tomorrow is too early. I would say maybe sixty-five days or something like that to get the head start, but that'd be almost like four months, and that'd be a, a lot of work as far as going through.
No, I don't want the application process, I want to open, let's say we open it Monday, open it for thirty days or six weeks, whatever the process is, and then close it and let the appointment committee vet the applications and then bring us the recommendation, so we can start the process sooner.
Any other question? Okay, Councilmember Benavente?
I'm gonna ask a Derek Thompson type question. Mr. Hondros, do you honestly think that people aren't gonna know that the application's been open for a P W C appointment? It's probably gonna be well-publicized, don't you think?
I would hope so.
I think so too. Um. Um, I think that the P W C appointment process is always a fiasco. And last time, it, it extended far beyond Mr. Fowler's statutory, you know, limits. So if we don't take into consideration how poorly we typically handle this appointment process by doing it sooner, we're just sort of asking for trouble again.
That's my point.
All right.
I think we're, I'm just trying to be proactive, instead of reactive.
Thank you. Councilmember Ingram?
Could I, could I add, so it's, I just, maybe I have yet, that is. Thirty days. So what I'm hearing is we open the thing, it up for thirty days, and so. And if I understand the clerk's process, it's we open it up for thirty days, we close it, the committee gets the, the information. So instead, could we just do sixty days? No, or? Okay, I, I just, I just have, have, uh, it's, 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 it's at the will of this council.
All right.
It's at, no, no, it's okay, it's at, we'd be past time, it's at the will of this council.
How soon, physically could we, could we, if it passed the ninth consensus, how soon?
I would recommend that.
Monday? So say, if we do it Monday, I'm good with having it at the end of, uh, May. Have the application period from Monday to May thirty-one.
It's at the will of this council.
If that's.
All right, uh.
When do we get back after break, July?
So if I could, if there's consensus, Mayor Proton, what I would ask y'all to do is understanding what we've heard is the interest in some conflicting and some questions that are, are provocative. If y'all, if there is consensus to do this and allow the clerk's office and the city attorney and the manager's office to come back to you at Monday with a proposal and a sketch.
I like it.
Yes.
So, because your point is a valid one, it's September and you're already starting, but you're not talking about extending the, the open period. You're just trying to make sure council has enough time to do the deliberations. But to your point as well, how, so I think we've, if there's consensus to accelerate the process, um, then allow us to come back to you at Monday at the manager's report. But, General.
Makes sense.
I will amend my consensus motion today.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mayor Proton, I have one more question.
Okay, with the second.
Yes, sir.
Second or those favor?
Mayor Proton, question?
Last question?
Madam Chair, what does the policy say again about appointments?
Nothing about this.
There wasn't a question?
And what it says?
Let me help you with my question, it says we meet twice a year, correct?
Yes.
So now we would meet three times a year?
No, and we meet as needed.
That's not what the policy says.
No, it is saying.
Make me a point.
It should be a policy to serve more than appointment. I have it all.
We'll meet a lot till the person is posted.
The city council shall make appointments twice a year in March and September. Replacements for an appointee who was assigned, resigned, or has been removed of the city code shall be made only as necessary, so have a.
All right.
The city advisory boards and commissions, correct? It's for your appointments.
But it does not speak to how many meetings you will have, it just says that you will make appointments twice a year.
Yes.
Those in favor of the consensus motion? Uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, those both, two, all right, thank you. Okay, uh, last item on the agenda, city council, again, item request to build an office of community safety and mental health. I'm assuming that's Councilmember Benavente?
Oh, no.
No? Is it Councilmember Ingram, who is?
Oh, um, he has said twice.
I mean, who, who, Councilmember Jensen?
Golly.
Well, it's funny, my screen is blank, my screen's.
And I'm not, hold on, okay, all right, so what I will say, okay. So y'all, I've got five minutes, so just bear with me, so I'm gonna go back. The goal is safe and secure community, diverse and viable economy, desire to live, work, and recreate. So I'm gonna make this real quick, past three weeks has been a disaster for me. I, I've had some issues going on through my work, and what I have learned through things that have happened in my work is that if somebody is in a mental health crisis in Fayetteville, North Carolina, after six o'clock, there is nobody to help you or to help that person but the Fayetteville Police Department. There's nobody to call, there's nobody. So you either have to reach out to the police department, and in my situation with my work, they did a phenomenal job, and I was blessed to have them there. So what I am asking is, you know, where it says, you know, what do you envision, this agenda, and it says, an update on the efforts to provide cost-related and information of community mental health program similar to the Durham heart modeling, press to have staff develop cost-effective mental health response model, which we have talked about tonight. We did that. We did that. We need a person, we need one person that can sit here and go through this and start the process. This will go back to my elephant that I'm talking about. But y'all, nobody's coming to help us, nobody's coming, and we have to start the process. So when budget time comes around, I'm gonna ask, I am going to ask that we have someone, and I'm not saying it is, um, we need someone to give us the facts, to start the process and getting us some help and try to bring other people to the table. I don't know if they will, but we cannot not try.
All right, uh, thank you, um, Councilmember Ingram, uh, questions?
Thank you, so I, I, I'm gonna, um, start by saying I think it's concerning that maybe you just found out this because in the information that has been presented to us, uh, not just from Councilmember bringing this item forward, from residents coming, asking you directly to support what you pretty much are asking for, and in turn was met with a no, and what I'm hearing is only because you have now had that experience, you can now say, you can now say, yes, we need this, unless I'm hearing it differently.
I think so.
Then, then that's okay, but I'm hearing it the way I'm hearing it. And so I do take issue with that because residents have come in here and have stated clearly what the need has been. I do understand that the city manager told us that we will get the information back about mental health, other items, um, but it, it's at the will of this council, I, but I did just want to make sure that I, I voiced that concern that I have because I'm not, I'm never gonna try to be above asking for something because all of a sudden, and I, I'm impacted by it. I, I, that, that, I, I want to listen to the residents when they, the first couple of times, so.
All right, uh, hang on, hang on a second, we have, I'm, I'm gonna let you respond. Um, Councilmember Hare, and then I'm gonna let, and then.
Thank you. We have been hearing this, so this is my question. When we were in the transit building, we were told, if I remember correctly, that we were putting people in place in the police department along mental health and social services, if I remember correctly. And I was kind of thinking I was gonna hear a little taste of that tonight, when Congress, that somewhat subject came up. So what my question is, is this something that we are gonna have, supposed to have, I mean, did we, was it, wasn't it budgeted? I, I mean, I'm, I'm still, let, let me get that from the manager, please. Okay. Uh, please, sir?
So what we have in the police department is we have two positions, one that deals with homelessness issues and the other that deals with somewhat social work issues. She is not here after six o'clock, she is not, um, here on, on weekends. But if there's something that happens at the police department and their response, that needs follow-up from a community resource or whatever else, and they would come back, and what is her name, Chief, uh, Elizabeth Marcus? Elizabeth Marcus would reach out and help try to connect that person to resources. We have that, we've had that since Chief Hawkins. And we also have Ms. Deanna Brax, who also works with our impact reduction team. Everything that, those are the two elements I said that we already have those combined. What I think is different is, as, um, Ms. Jensen mentioned, is that at eleven o'clock at night, when you are, and I don't know how many, what situations folks know or don't know, but uh, by the time the police actually take the person downtown to detain them, they're still clearing the scene and the person's showing back up at, at. Again, I don't know the answer to what anybody can do, I don't know what anybody can do. But this is not only a situation where we're trying to provide support through Ms. Marcus for the person who's having interaction with the police. There seems to be a missing element to people who, I won't say victims, but are impacted by it, but may not necessarily be the person who's in need of mental health. I think, so if, this runs the, uh, the gamut of issues and, um, that, but you're right, we do have those two positions, um, and, and, but it's not enough, that's what I think I'm hearing from bodies.
All right, is that last question?
Well, yes, sir, it is the question, and I was, maybe because I didn't really focus in on how it functioned within our police department, I, nowhere did I think that it stopped at five o'clock or six o'clock. And so I, with what we already have in place, I think I would like to see it, uh, uh, so, some changes to expand maybe to go to that. And regardless, regardless if you, you know, sometimes we don't always catch it when it's, it comes. Sometimes it takes longer for others to catch it, but.
I remember, Tim, I just need to add this point, so Ms. Marcus is not out there providing direct client interaction with people. So it is a resources referral, and we do not have anyone that right now, that if you're having a mental health crisis, that, that would be the alliance, that would be those folks in there who would come out and respond and said, I'm a psychologist, I'm a licensed clinical social worker, I'm a mental health professor, and I'm gonna come here and I'm gonna talk with you and try to get you calmed down. That's a contract that county maintains, and was it two hours or three hours that they have to respond? Came up in the committee meeting, uh, Councilman.
Two hours.
Two hours.
Well, to, to cut you just a little short, so then with that information that we spoke about that's coming back to us, what was that heart program or whatever, what it was, is that gonna be, could this be a part of when that information comes back?
It could be, but the, but the real hope is, is that the, uh, program that the hospital is using for the community paramedics, where they will actually have a team of mental health, uh, uh, trained folks who would, just like when you call for a heart attack and call for broken, you'd be able to call and they'd have someone on the truck who could respond, and that would be twenty-four seven within the entire county, uh, and they also then could bill Medicare, Medicaid, or insurance.
Uh, Councilmember Jensen?
So, um, I want to go back to what Councilmember Ingram said, um, so yes, I am, I am glad that it did happen to me. And when Councilmember Benavente put his, um, his request in, no one came to talk to me. I saw that right there that night, we've had the conversation, no one came to talk to me. I will say this, I have said, we need this, we need that, and I've always been told this, these people take care of this, these people take care of this, this group takes care of this. I think God brought it to me, this situation for me, to realize that nobody took care of it, that nobody is there. And we have to do something that at. And we have to do something that at eight o'clock at night, if something happens, but we have no one to turn to. So my question is, I'm going back to what you asked for, is to have someone, a beginning of the, um, elephant, as I say, to start eating the toad, to have somebody in an office to unpeel this onion, because maybe some people around this table knew that, that there was nobody after six o'clock? And as soon as I found that out, I started digging, and I started peeling back the onion. I talked to the people in Greensboro when we were in Concord, I talked to the people from Durham when we were in Concord. Their whole, half their city council was there, and we sat down and had a conversation, and I said, "Is your office of public safety working for you?" They said, "Does it have issues? Yes." "Is it exactly what we want? No." And this is a question that I asked both of them. Would you take it away? And they all said, "Absolutely not, it is part of the toolbox." So with that happening to me, and it taking interest for me, and, not interest, I don't wanna say the word interest, but it helped me pull back the onion to see the work that we had to do. So that is my request. I am gonna request it, I want it on the parking lot of the, um, budget, and I think we really need to be serious about it. And it's not to take anybody's job, it's not to hurt anybody, it is to get, I don't wanna say control, but to understand what we can do to help fix it.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Jensen, Councilmember Banks McLaughlin.
Okay, so you said we already have two positions, did you say that?
We have that, and we also have a grant-funded position, Chris Collins that also deals, owns this, this Shakisha. I think that grant is ending in, uh, Jim.
And again, that's during the daytime, not after?
Well...
Or they're not even doing it yet?
Well, 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 she's not a, a responder clinician, no.
Right, so, but we don't have a responder, Kate Fear has.
The alliance through, uh, the, the mental health, uh, uh, group has that, um, but that's a two-hour response that they have.
Okay, so, we're all right, so with the information, just like Councilmember Hare mentioned, that's what I was gonna ask, is that information you gonna be bringing back? And then, um, Councilwoman Jensen, are you asking for information, or are you asking for a set amount of funds to be allocated to?
I'm asking for both. I'm asking for information, and, and we're sitting here, and this is nothing on anybody. But we made a decision in November. Okay, we made a decision.
No, I'm, 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 I'm not, yeah, but, but, I'm talking to everybody.
We, we made a decision in November. Staff has been working a lot, they've got, everybody has a lot on their plate. I'm asking for one person to be in charge of this, so we can get our information, and we can start peeling the onion back and do something. But nobody's coming, y'all, nobody's coming. So maybe the county will say, "Hey, the city's done it, maybe we need to do it, maybe we need to get on board with it, but we can't do nothing."
And, and just to be, um, clear to just so I can understand, so that would be like someone dialing nine-one-one, and instead of our officer showing up, it would be?
No, so the way they, the way that I was talking to everybody in Greensboro, and, um, so in Greensboro, they do, they, um, contract social workers, social mental health workers out, and they have a contract for them. So what they have is they have five on contract, and for twenty-four hour, every day, twenty-four seven, there is somebody on call. So let's say somebody calls, um, and they're in mental distress. Of course, the social worker can't go in there. But the police can go in first, kind of assess the situation and say, "Okay, you know, we're ready for you to come in", 'cause they need protection too. We don't have time to train, um, social workers to be police officers. This is just moving it ahead. They also have them at the nine-one-one station, they have one person in there, and it could be that same person if somebody's in mental distress, that they get on the phone with them and help. Like I said, they all said, is it, you know, can they think of something better that, you know, they would like something better with it? Is it working, they're learning as they go, but they are putting more money to it every year.
Last question, just to make sure, so not someone showing up, but somebody helping them while someone shows up, from?
A start. And, and I want, I want staff to come back and give us a start, and while, and I wanted this to be done now because we are going into the budget. Can we afford three point two million dollars for it? No. But we can do a start of something.
So before I go to Councilmember Benevente, your ask is a consensus for some money, or at least to go to the parking lot so we can have a budget number, and then we can vote on whether to?
To have one person to be able to do this research and to start peeling the onion back to, as Greensboro and Durham have done. And Durham says, you know, "I'm a big component, get on the bus, go see what everybody else is doing, and be right there. We did it when we did the day center. We went to, um, Texas, we looked and said, you know, they told us, this is how you need to start, and we're doing it with the day center, so we, we've got to start."
All right, Councilmember Benevente?
Um, Greensboro's an office of community safety. The director there does that kind of contracting that Councilwoman Jensen just described. Um, they started off as a one-person team, um, and they did it with a million-dollar budget. Um, I think that's a good place for us to start, is to have somebody who will look into the work that we asked to be done back in November. Um, and, you know, when it comes to the hearts model, y'all, we keep bringing that up, they have a crisis response person in the nine-one-one call center only from nine to five. They have a three-person team that goes out to respond to calls only from ten to nine. They have a co-response with an officer that'll go out between nine to five, all of this is Monday through Friday. Now, all of that is just where they're starting, right, and it can go from there, but we gotta start somewhere. The main compo, the, the big thing to remember before that is that the hearts lives under a very particular place, and that's the Durham Department of Community Safety. So that's really where it starts, y'all. If we want all these amazing things, we do have to start somewhere. I think if we have a director and an office of community safety, we can all of a sudden get to all these places that we all agree we need to go, piece by piece, over time, over the many years, over the many budgets. Um, but with a director and an office, I think that's a good place to start, and if that's what we're doing tonight, let's do it.
All right, Councilmember Hondros, and then, uh, we're gonna have a...
Question to, uh, Councilmember Jensen, so this is your question. So I can fully kinda grasp what, or got my head on what we're, what we're asking for. Uh, it sounds like you want one person so we can kinda unify and centralize all the things that we're doing, whether it's a system manager position, a director position, somebody to kinda lead.
We don't know, we don't know what we don't know, and I know there's, I guess, but, and, and there's a lot of people out there that know, and, you know, the lady, Ms. Rodriguez, seven?
McNeil.
McNeil. From, you know, that, they've come in and, like I said, with Durham, with Greensboro, I think that we can just bring it all together and get our information and know where we're headed and where we can lie. Again, I don't know who in this room knew that about six o'clock.
So we're looking for a leader to kinda lead us, they'll vet all this stuff out?
Yeah, to, to give us the answer.
What we need to do next?
Yes, yes, and that we're making the decisions. We're making the decisions, but we just need to have the conversation, and we really just need to...
Dedicated person?
Dedicated person.
Well, if I can, Mayor Protem, I should, um, what would also be helpful, and we've not done this, and this is, some of the tension I think many cities have got, is we actually need to put on a board what we believe the services are that should be available and are couldn't, who should provide those under the ideal situation, which ones are not being provided, and then what the city council is willing to do to either fund it or say it's not our responsibility. But in listening to the conversation tonight, one is, who's going to respond instead of police? The other part of the conversation with you is, who's going to respond to the neighbors who have had to deal with that situation? Then who's gonna follow up the next day to make sure that the person who is now, is going back and is on their meds, is at the VA? That becomes a multi-tiered onion that one person, one staff person, whether they're on call or not, is not gonna be able to do that. They're gonna have to do it through contracts for other folks who are out here. There is no panacea, there's no, anyone who's ever had a relative or had to go through mental health training or counseling themselves, this is not a one-and-done, particularly for when it's long-term issues. And if we're committing that we're going to be the emergency response to get people into group, we can do that, but I think that until we map that completely out, what services we demand or need in the community, who's currently providing them, who's not providing, and then what holes the council wants to play, but...
But city manager, that, that, we need the person to do that for us, and that is where it starts, when we're eating the elephant, this is the toad. And, you know, it's just like a business. You, you start out with an idea, and it just expands and it keeps going, and, you know, but right now, we have to have that, that person to say, go, "What if this happens? What if, what if?" That's just my ask, I, you know, I don't, I know that I'm probably going in circles, but it really, like I said, six o'clock.
Nothing available?
There's nothing.
Police.
And, and again, I'm gonna say it for the record. I'm glad that it did happen to me, because I went to everybody and anybody. The VA wouldn't even acknowledge it.
So is your motion just gonna be developing office of community safety and mental health with a director? That's gonna be that one person leading all this discussion?
That, that is what I'm asking for.
Could be a budget item in the parking lot for us to...
Yes, for, for...
Have I got that?
Yeah, I just asked one more question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Hare, second round.
Then, just, and I may not get it tonight, I mean, if you need to call him, if I need to come set up a meeting, I'll do that. Then what is it that I was just asking about, that we spoke about up here? Uh, what do those pe- people really do? Don't, they can't help with this, then, I, I don't... And I can talk about this another time.
No, we, y'all, we, you need to hit it while it's hot, and it's hot.
Is, you don't, until you articulate what your responsibility is as a council, and what you're willing to commit your tax dollars to fund, if the county who does mental health and gets money from the state...
And they don't.
And if, and, 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 if they don't do that, and Councilman Benevente is, is getting a lot of this data from the committee that he and I think, um, Councilman, what else? Committee, and, um, and others are getting it. Until, having four people in the room, uh, that, that doesn't matter. Until you decide who is going to go to that house, who is going to take a call from the landlord when a tenant is destroying their property, and they're saying, "I went to the magistrate, and the magistrate won't let me, uh, uh, told me they can't, I gotta go through an eviction process", but the person's back at the property. Or it's a, um, a, 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 a parent who says, "I've got a sixteen-year-old who, they won't let him back in school, but I don't know what to do with him during the day, I can't get him over to the Roxy Avenue." Who, those are the questions that we have to answer, and if that's a person that can help answer those, but at the back end that wants those questions answered, who's gonna pay for that? And so, w- w- we have, the conversation has shifted. Five years ago, Mayor Protem and Mr. Hare knew, we talked about homelessness, Councilwoman Banks McLaughlin knew. She asked the question six times, "Can we build a homeless shelter?" And the council continuously said that is not the responsibility of the city alone. What we are gonna do is a day resource, and we're gonna try to do this. This is a very, it's an organic, it's growing. But I don't want anybody to think that Durham's heart model, they have identified there, that they have an answer for that parent of that sixteen-year-old right now.
No, they don't.
They don't. But they, they have a framework that they could begin to answer the question. But they're talking about millions of dollars, and they gotta start it with a grant. We don't have such a grant that we're starting from, so I'm looking to take resources from already things that we have to stand up whatever y'all do, and we will do it because this is a hot topic, and it will get added to the parking lot if the consensus passes.
Last night, Councilmember Banks McLaughlin.
I was just gonna say, with, with the Aqua Funds, could that be something used for that?
Not this.
We can, we could look at, we have the committed projects that we're there with.
All right, consensus for Councilmember Jensen's motion. One, two, three, one, two, three, four, unanimous, five.
Well, it's, it's going to the parking lot.
Yeah, it's unanimous, their motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Councilmember Benevente.
No.
Well done. Sir?